Evening. Welcome to the Gloucester City Council meeting of March 25, 2025. This meeting of the Gloucester City Council is recorded on Zoom with a link that is posted on the agenda. You are calling in on a phone. You can press star nine to request to speak. If you are watching on a computer or a device, there is a raised hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these during oral communications, public hearings, to be recognized to speak. If technical difficulties arise and the Zoom link is interrupted during an in-person hybrid meeting of the City Council and a quorum is present, the meeting may continue after efforts have been made to reestablish the link. The minutes shall note the interruption. It is the finding of the city of Gloucester that no individual should be denied equal treatment or opportunity because of their age, ancestry, color, disability, including intellectual and developmental disability, family status, immigration status, gender identity or expression, military status, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex or sexual orientation. Tonight, we have in attendance to my left is Ward Two Councillor Dylan Benson, Councillor-at-Large Valerie Gilman. To my right is Ward One Councillor Scott Mammard, Ward Three Councillor Marjorie Grace, Councillor-at-Large Jason Grow, Ward Five Councillor and Councillor Vice President Sean Nolan, myself, Council President Tony Gross. Also, we have in attendance in the building tonight, we have Rob Vacari, the Building Commissioner, Nancy Pappas, our Assessor, and Dominique Hurley, our Board of Health, our Health Director. Did I say Rob? Didn't I say Rob Vacari? Oh, yeah, right. And our City Clerk Grace Borrier and our Assistant City Clerk Danielle Argentino. And that is that. Now, we will have the flag salute led by Marjorie Grace.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We also have Deputy Fire Chief Robert Rivas is on Zoom. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Oral Communications.
Public shall have the opportunity, every regularly scheduled meeting, to be heard under Oral Communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communication shall allow any resident and/or property owner and/or business owner who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council. Make their statement without debate, and the council will refer matters to the Office of the Mayor. Persons speaking under Oral Communications shall be limited to three minutes each. Anyone in the building would like to speak under Oral Communications? And we don't have anyone with their hand raised online, so we will move to the next order of business. Madam Clerk.
Presentation by Sarah Grow from Open Door on the state of food insecurity on Cape Town.
Welcome, Sarah.
Hello, welcome. So have you shared my screen? Oh, I need to share my screen. Oh, it had minimized, I'm sorry.
Ward Three Councillor Frank Majota is in the building. Ward Four, sorry. I went back in time.
Thank you, President of the City Council and City officials. Thanks so much for having me today. So I am Sarah Grow, and I am the Director of Advocacy and Development at the Open Door. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you a little bit about what's going on in Gloucester and Cape Town in terms of food insecurity. So some of this is obvious to you guys, and so I haven't actually performed.
Sarah, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but Councillor-at-Large Worthley is now in attendance. Thank you.
Thank you. Please feel free to ask me questions. I haven't got a formal presentation except for the salt slide, so I'd like this to be sort of more interactive. It might be better for everybody's. So the mission of the Open Door, as many of you know, is to alleviate the impact of hunger in our community. We use practical strategies to connect people to good food, to advocate on behalf of those in need, and to engage others in the work of building food security. So while you know that we are based here in Gloucester, we actually serve 11 cities and towns. Gloucester is the community of most need, and you might want to know what is food security. Some kids always ask us, are you locking up all the good food? No, that's not what food security is about. It's actually the consistent and adequate access to nutrition in a socially acceptable environment. We don't think it's socially acceptable to come to a food pantry to get your food. So that's why people who come to the food pantry are food insecure. So in 2024, the Greater Boston Food Bank did a food access report, and one in three Massachusetts residents are food insecure. And if you can look at Essex County, we actually have more than that. We are 36% of the people in Essex County are food insecure. So this is some information from 2024. We saw a 30% increase in requests for food assistance last year. That means we served 2.35 million pounds of food to 11,893 unique people. I'm going to say that again. 11,893 unique people. That was 2,057 additional people than we saw in 2023. And when I say a 30% increase in requests for food assistance, that was actually on top of a 30% increase we saw in 2023. I just want you guys to know that this actually, in our history, is unprecedented. The last time we saw a 30% increase was 2008, during the actual recession. So we have now seen that increase two years in a row. And we are actually, in 2023, we served more people than we did in the height of COVID. And then last year, we saw even more people. So for two years running, we've actually served more people than we did during COVID. We saw, we had more than 100,000 visits to our programs. It was actually closer to 101. We had 10775 visits to our program last year. In terms of meals out of our kitchen, we served just over 164,000 meals. That actually was more than 55% increase year over year. And we served 18,000 summer meals for kids. And I want you to remember that number, because I'm going to talk a little bit about that later on. Our food pantry, I'm not going to repeat the numbers, but over 6,000 people came to our food pantry, the Ipswich Food Pantry, and our mobile market. Our mobile market, we have more than 25 different sites, from veteran centers to councils on aging, to public housing neighborhoods, to the North Shore Community Colleges. So we are expanding. 29% of the food we distribute is fresh produce. We had more than 2,700 SNAP, which is food stamps appointments. And we also have a program called Medically Tailored Groceries that connects low-income people with good food and helps them manage their chronic illness. We also have a thrift store, in case you guys know about it. This has actually become relevant later on. We have referrals to people in need, but the most important thing is that it actually provides revenue for our programs. But really, what I wanted to talk to you about was not only sort of level set the increased need that we have seen, and you should know that 78% of the people we serve in our food pantry is a Gloucester residence. So this really is a Gloucester issue. Some of the things that we're looking at that could potentially come down in 2025 is some funding cuts. So we could potentially lose funding. In terms of cash revenues, we're actually pretty strategic in how we raise funds. Only 3% of our budget is actually federal and government funding. However, that's still around $250,000. And that is something that we could potentially lose. We could also see the loss of USDA food. I think you've probably read about that in the New York Times last week. And we have about $750,000 to $1 million worth of USDA food that comes through our programs that we could potentially lose in 2025. But the bigger, actually the bigger concern we have, not just in terms of what this means to us as an organization, is actually what it means to the people. So there's potential SNAP cuts on the horizon. And not only potential cuts to SNAP, food stamps, we're also talking potential cuts to Medicaid and Social Security, housing. All of these things could have a potential trickle-down effect, because we know one of the main reasons why people come to the Open Door, I mean, America, or even Gloucester, doesn't really have a hunger problem. There's plenty of food in America. What they have is a money problem. And people choose between paying their rent, between buying groceries, between paying for Medicare, medical costs, and childcare and utilities. And these are the things. And food is the one thing where people will scrimp and they'll save. School meals for all, also. We're very lucky here in Massachusetts that we get, our kids get free school meals. But if the federal government decide to cut reimbursements with that, we could potentially lose free school meals for all if the Massachusetts State Government can't actually, you know, make up that deficit. So now my question is for you all. If we were to put all of the food assistance from charitable organizations and federal programs into 10 grocery bags, and there's a few of you that already know this question, so I ask you to not answer this question. How many grocery bags represent the charities? Anyone have an idea? Of the 10? This is a question to the City Council. If there were 10 grocery bags that represent all the feeding programs in the United States, how many of those feeding, how many of those grocery bags represent charities? Six? Anyone else? Five? Four? One? I don't tell you that because I want you to think that we're not doing a good job. And I don't tell you that because I don't, because we are already doing all that we can do. When I first started working at the Open Door 14 years ago, 15 years ago, it used to be one in 20 bags. We've already doubled the amount of work that we're doing. But I do this to show you how important the federal safety net is. The majority of these bags are made up of SNAP, food stamps, Meals on Wheels, school lunches, all of those programs. And so the reason why I tell you this is, if there's any one cut, there's really, the charities cannot make it up. Feeding people and the social safety net is a partnership between government and charities, and we cannot make it up.
Those bags do not represent the Open Door contribution?
Nope. But what, that one bag represents charities like the Open Door. The nine bags represent all the other federal programs.
At the grocery store and at school meals.
Correct. Meals on Wheels as well. I thought you might be interested to see, this is sort of our service area at the Open Door, how much food stamps actually comes into our cities. So around $10 million annually comes into Gloucester in terms of food stamps. $10 million. That's $10 million that goes into the economy, mostly the grocery stores. So you can see, if there's a 10% cut in SNAP, you're talking $1 million of food that people have, less food that people have. That's $1 million that there's been less money spent in our grocery stores. And what we're hearing is, they're looking at 20% to 30% cut in SNAP. So you're talking about $2 million or $3 million of food, and that's just Gloucester residents. And, you know, if I was to extrapolate this for our entire service area, this is the kind of money that it would take, again, there are wholesale prices, to backfill that food. So you can see, there's really no way that the Open Door could backfill any cuts to SNAP. And this is on top of the fact that we've already seen unprecedented need, even worse than COVID, even worse than 2008. So I just wanted, we just wanted to come today to just let you know what the last couple of years have been like in terms of food insecurity. And I want to leave you with a couple of client quotes. Because of those 11,893 people, they are all individuals. And this is Nick, who comes to the Open Door. "The health benefits getting food from the Open Door has just been incredible," says Nick, who lives with diabetes. "It has helped me manage my diabetes by getting healthy food. If I didn't have the Open Door, I'd be eating box mac and cheese, a peanut butter and jelly, and white bread, and my sugars would be out of control." For Clara, "When I run out of SNAP, I know I can get groceries from the Open Door." Clara's a 36-year-old single mom. And because of that, I can save my SNAP benefit to get formula for my daughter, and I know I won't go hungry. I can tell you that moms will skip meals so they can feed their kids, so they can use their SNAP to buy formula. Thank you very much. Any questions?
All right, with Councillor Benson.
Thank you. Thank you, Sarah, for that presentation. Just a couple of questions. We're looking at the serving individuals, the 11,000. How many are those?
Gloucester.
Are Gloucester?
Yep. So I don't know that exactly, because with our meal programs, our meal programs are unregistered. But I can tell you, with our registered programs, like our Gloucester Food Pantry, 78% of those are Gloucester residents.
And that other slide that you were showing about the SNAP benefits, and you were showing that 4,149, that represents?
The number of people.
The number of people in Gloucester. So that's nearly, that's nearly, I'm looking at it, 14% of our citizens, our residents, are on SNAP.
Residents, right, because non-residents wouldn't be eligible.
So say yes, and that's, that's true. So that's just something to think about. Nearly 14% of our residents are using SNAP benefits. And it got me, and I appreciate it very much. And I may have a few other questions.
That's okay.
Thank you very much.
I might also like to announce that City Auditor Kenny Costa has joined us online. Councillor Gilman.
Thank you, Councillor President. So on March 14, in the Gloucester Daily, there was an editorial, it was, it was a jeer for the concern that the Federal Department of Agriculture announced it was cutting off funding for the Northeast Food for Schools Program.
Yep.
Which provides fresh produce and other local food for school-aged children. What part of what you just presented represents that?
So none of that represent that. That's actually, was a $5 million line item in the Massachusetts State Budget that went to many other programs, but it wasn't going to emergency food providers.
Okay, thank you.
That's fine. Thank you.
Councillor Grow.
I was going to keep quiet. Yeah, I know. I'm going to be nice. Actually, there's a couple of things I'd like you to know, since I know that you know them. Can you tell people how much the average person receives the SNAP benefits?
Yep.
Who your target demographics are in terms of seniors, veterans, the disabled? And also, can you explain a little bit about the Meals Program, Summer Meals Program?
Oh, thank you for reminding me on that one. Okay, what was the first question? You gave me too many.
How much do people receive with SNAP benefits?
Okay, so the average amount of money that people receive in SNAP is about $6 a day. So they're talking about, when they talk about 20% of cuts, you're talking about going down to $4 a day. Now, this is the average. So for example, I know somebody who is developmentally disabled, and he makes $1,200 in Social Security. He has $500 in his rent. That means he has $700 left in order to pay for everything. He's only eligible for $100 a month in SNAP. And what you'll find is, most people who are, have housing benefits, or, you know, in public housing, or have Section 8, oftentimes, they're getting much less in SNAP because their housing costs aren't very much. So for example, he who gets $100 a month now, that's, he's going to get a 20% cut and have $80 a month. So he'll have $3 a day in order to buy food.
I'd also like to announce that the Harbor Master Chris Lecito has joined us online. I think you were also asked about the groups that get SNAP.
Yep.
Veterans.
So veterans, elders, working families, families with children. I mean, all demographics get, I couldn't tell you what the percentages are, but all demographics get it. What I did want to tell you about, and thank you for reminding me about Summer Meals for Kids. So the Open Door, we already started to see reduced federal funding last year. Our Summer Meals for Kids program that runs during the 10 weeks of summer, we had 18,000 meals. We only received a reimbursement for 3,000 of those meals, which means we had to self-fund 15,000 meals, or 85% of the program. And we saw a reduction in that funding, because the rules with USDA went back to pre-COVID rules, which meant that all Summer Meals for Kids programs had to be in a congregate meal setting. That means kids had to sit down. That means we have to hire two people. That means, and we were no longer allowed to distribute meals through our food pantries. We were no longer allowed to distribute meals in our van at all the public housing neighborhoods that we go to in Gloucester. And we decided it was far more important for those kids to have meals. And so we basically don't get any reimbursement for those meals that we serve, the majority of which we distribute that way. Yep.
Councillor Worthley.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Ms. Grow, for your presentation, but also the work you do every single day. There's a lot of people on this council who have been deeply involved with the food pantry, and I don't want to at any point suggest that I've been anymore. In fact, I haven't. But I did volunteer when I was in high school, and that got me very interested as a teen in giving back. And I also, there was a point in my life, and you were extremely helpful, where I didn't know, I was a single dad overnight of two children, full custody, and I was reeling, and I didn't know how I was going to put food on the table. And it was a challenge psychologically to say, here I am, known in the community, and down on my luck. And I had to work through that. And even though I was afraid, I came in, and you and the rest of your staff were exceptionally welcoming. The stigma that, you know, I shouldn't be needing this help was gone instantly, and I could not be more grateful. And what I'd like to suggest is that there are people who could benefit from the work that you do, that still fear that rejection, not the rejection, the stigma that comes with that. And I wonder if there's things that either as individuals or collectively as the council that you suggest we could do to help with that, if there are volunteer opportunities that you think your organization could benefit from, and if there's some other suggestions you have that we, as leaders in the community, could do to be more helpful, I'd welcome a few minutes if you could address that. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank you, and I want to thank every member here of this council. You've all been very supportive and send people to us and come to us and volunteer. So thank you, each and every one of you for that. We work very hard to make food accessible to all. I think you're right. I think stigma is a big issue, but Gloucester is a good and kind place. And we are as good as this community is. And we really couldn't do it without you and without the rest of the community supporting us. Having said that, if people still need some suggestions, I would say, yes, come and volunteer. We always need volunteers. Just so you know, because of this extreme need we've been seeing, we are now open at 8:30 in the morning. We've never had to open that early before. We are closed until 6 o'clock. We've got food lockers that people can get food in after hours and on the weekend. We've added 240 additional slots every week, so that 240 new families can come to us. We've already pretty much done everything that we can done, you know, within our budget to not expand our budget. So yes, people can volunteer. We always need volunteers. People can donate food. It's better if you donate money, because we can do more with your money. That's where Second Glance comes in. 25 cents of every dollar that we need comes from Second Glance. So donate your money and donate your stuff, your good stuff and treasures to Second Glance and help us feed people.
Councillor Benson.
Thank you, and thank you again. And I'm looking just at the, some numbers as you were talking, and it, and on the website, it says 1 in 6.
Yep.
Has that increased? Is that now 1 in 5? You just talked about 200-plus new families, and we're looking, speaking about the poverty rate in Gloucester. We have a higher poverty rate than most other communities in Gloucester. Just so we know, it's over nearly 11%. So just with that, are we seeing an increase that gone up?
So here, it has gone up. But here's the thing. Because we have a lot of unregistered programs, like our meal programs, we do not feel confident. I'm not going to go beyond 1 in 6 until I had it written in stone. And so 1 in 6 is the minimum number of people. And the other thing you have to remember is that we're also providing lunches to Pathways for Children. We're providing lunches to the senior center here in Gloucester two to three times a week. So because of those, we are presuming that those are all Gloucester residents. But because we don't manage those programs, I can't stand, put my hand on a stack of Bibles, the Quran, whatever you want to have me swear on, to tell you that they're all Gloucester residents. But chances are, it's greater than 1 in 6. But we are, we are just saying, we are at least 1 in 6 Gloucester residents.
Appreciate that. And I think it's important to note, too, statistics have shown that nearly 19% of children under the age of 18 in this community are living in poverty.
Yep.
So I think it's things to consider. And if I may, as someone who grew up in poverty, grew up in public housing, I am really moved by this presentation and all your work. And I'm always choking up, because the consequences that you've presented tonight will be so severe for so many people. Thank you. And thank you for all the work that you do. And I encourage everyone in this community that can give, give, and go shop at Second Glance. I enjoy Second Glance as well. And if there's opportunities to volunteer, I encourage everyone to volunteer and give their time and money. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor.
Councillor Grace.
Thank you, Sarah, for the presentation. It's really, when you see the numbers and see the data, it's really, it's just a stark slap in the face, basically, of how desperate we are in this community. For volunteering, is it, do you have people just walk in to volunteer, or is there someplace that you sign up for times to volunteer, so we can get that word out to people?
Yeah. So if you go to our website, foodpantry.org, and it has "How to Help" on the right-hand side, you scroll down, you click Volunteer, you put an application form, and then you will be invited to an orientation. It's really simple. We actually have, you can sign up online to volunteer. You can sign up the very day you want to volunteer. And we prefer you don't, because we like to be a little bit more ahead of the schedule. But we do make it very accessible. Thank you.
Councillor Nolan.
Sarah.
Sarah, great presentation. The Open Door is an asset to our entire community in Gloucester and the surrounding cities. Whenever someone can give something, it's always worth thinking of the opening door. We have people that go in there, I've talked to friends that have been, you know, clients of the Open Door, and then turned into be volunteers working, because they understand it. They help them through a strong need in what's happening.
Yeah.
I think that everybody should do something with the Open Door. Whether it's volunteering, or throwing some money at them, or going down there just to see what happens day to day. I don't know, maybe a can collection, like for, like, animal aids or something would help, where people could put money in something daily, you know, loose change or whatever. Because every penny does help.
They can sign up and be a good egg online and give every month, that would be wonderful.
Excellent, that's something you didn't...
Foodpantry.org, yeah.
Yeah. But all in all, great presentation, you don't have to sell it to me. I'll do whatever I can for the Open Door whenever I can. And it means a lot to a lot of good people. And a lot of people that you may talk to every day, you have no idea what they're going through, and they may be surviving because of what they can get from the Open Door. So stigma, like Jeff had mentioned, it's really not an issue down there. There's don't ask, don't tell. You can walk in and say you need 5 meals. And you're getting 5 meals, and they're gonna go out the door and hopefully do the right thing. So I think this is probably one of the best things that's happened in the city of Gloucester in a long time, as far as charities. No one there expects to be patted on the back for it. You guys look at your time and the volunteers there as doing the right thing, and not looking for a pat on the back or a thank you. If it comes, it comes, but you're doing the right thing. Food insecurity is a huge matter, and we don't know what's gonna happen in the next 6 months to a year. And if we can prepare, and everybody in the city of Gloucester do a little bit more to help out, it's gonna help the citizens that could really use it. And Sarah, thank you very much, presentation was spot on.
Thank you very much, and if things change, I'm happy to come back. Like I said, we don't know what's gonna happen, we're living, you know, every day.
Thanks. I'd like to announce that C.A.O. Cahill has also joined us. Counselor Gilman.
So Sarah, I think you'll remember that my son and I had took Friday shifts for 3 whole years when he was at O'Malley. And it was just the best mother-son bonding that we could ever have done, so thank you. As the state is pulling together the budget for fiscal 2026,
Yeah.
if you see opportunities where we can help do like a resolution in support of a budget line item, if you could come back through your contact on the City Council, or council, and, you know, we would be happy to do something like that to lobby with Senator Tar and Representative Ferrante.
Thank you. Massachusetts is actually, I think many states are very jealous of Massachusetts, because we have a line item in the state budget called Mefap, which is the Massachusetts Emergency Food Assistance Program, and it's well over $40 million. I think $41 million. And that money goes to food banks in order to buy local food. So, you know, we are very lucky to have that in Massachusetts.
Thank you so much, you do so much.
Counselor Grohl.
I was just gonna offer you the opportunity to give a pitch for the Empty Bowl.
Oh yeah, I forgot to mention, we're having Empty Bowl is coming back here May 1st. We have, it's the theme this year is called Enchanted Forest. We have cruise port, tickets will go on sale pretty soon. And there's still some room for some sponsors. So if you know anyone out there in the land that would like to sponsor our Empty Bowl event, I would love to hear from you. Thank you. And I just want to say again, thank you to the council. Honestly, and thank you for your kind words. We, the Open Door, truly couldn't do it without the people and the groups and the communities that really care about their neighbors. And that's the truth, and I thank you.
Hey, well, we're not done yet. I haven't had a chance to speak.
Sorry, Mr. President.
Now, I just, I went on the site, because, you know, I volunteer there every week. And tomorrow, there's 21 shifts available. It's just tomorrow. So it has lots of need. I will say that, you know, being a local, working with locals, that there is no judgment at all. When you, when I run into people I know there who, at whatever reason they arrived at that door, they are graciously served and are made feel so welcome and encouraged to please come take advantage of this. And it doesn't matter, there's no, there's no means testing, there's no affiliation testing, there's nothing. It's like, doesn't matter who you are, what you are, just, you are in need, come. And it is so refreshing just to have that, and all the volunteers really exude that welcoming. When you walk in, you just feel, you feel it. It's infectious in that building, and it's really a marvel that the organization you have built. And to see that there's 21 slots available still tomorrow, because people preregister. I know mine's kind of a cherished slot, and I have to go in like 3 months in advance to beat people out, because when I was laid up, they started stealing them all. And so, it, but the work you do there is invaluable, and it is... Volunteering there just makes you feel good, just, and it's not because, it's not because you were, you just feel good because you, the people that you're surrounded with, it just, it just is infectious, like I said. And so, can't say enough about what you guys do. I'm proud to work there and be allowed to work there. And so, thank you very much.
Well, thank you, and we have a great team, and again, a great community, so thanks very much.
Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Confirmation of new appointments.
Counselor Nolan.
Thank you.
Up first, we have Tamara, Tamara, seeing the audience. If you just want to come up and tell the full council a little about yourself, that'd be excellent.
Hi, everybody, can you hear me? Thanks. Tom Rivers here. I've been a Gloucester resident for 3 and 1/2 years. And I just finished the Mass Audubon Field Naturalist Program, which brought me to the Open Space Committee. And balancing the needs of the community for recreation and open space is something I'm very interested in supporting.
Excellent, thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from the council?
Ms. Grohl. Thank you for stepping up. Did I hear you say you've been in Gloucester for 3 and 1/2 years?
Yes.
Well, I want to thank you for jumping right in. There's lots of spaces available on various boards and commissions, and it's nice to see when people show up and say, there's a need, I'll be there, and I'm gonna serve, so thank you.
Counselor Gilman.
Tamra, thank you. Is, after getting to know what the Open Space does, is there a section that you're particularly interested in?
Probably Dogtown, I'm interested in that, protecting that and learning more about it, but fascinating.
Speak right, the microphone, I'm sorry.
Fascinating place, Dogtown.
Thank you. I know Dogtown quite well. And I know you're sitting next to Catherine Goodick, who also knows it quite well, so thank you.
Yeah, she's going to help me.
Other questions? Okay.
That being said, on a motion, like Counselor Majota seconded by Counselor Grace, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted 3 in favor, 0 opposed, to recommend the City Council appoint Tamara Vessier to the Open Space Recreation Advisory Committee, term to end 2/15/28, and I so move.
Second.
Counselor Worthley.
Worthley, thank you. You're gonna have a lot of fun in this committee, and you're gonna learn a lot pretty quickly. Could you help us with just pronouncing your name, so we don't make a mistake going forward?
Sure, Tamra Vessier.
Vessier.
Vessiere, but yeah, it's been Americanized.
So which is it, which do you prefer?
Vessiere is the pronunciation.
Vessiere, and if Tamra, okay, thank you. Welcome aboard.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, 9 to 0. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And good luck.
All right, so next up, we have for the Board of Registitors, Catherine Goodick, termed to end 2015, 2028.
Good evening, everybody. So many of you know me, but for those of you who don't know me, I'm Catherine Goodick. I actually do live in Dogtown, as I told Tamara. I'm a lifelong resident of Gloucester, lived here all my life, love the city, and recently retired about a year ago. And have worked as the warden in Ward 4, so that was really fun to do and got some really insight into the City Council's office and the City Clerk's office, and really worked with Grace and Danielle, and really enjoyed that and helping out. And when this opportunity came forward, I thought, this is a really nice thing for me to do and give back to the community and ensure our voters are properly done. And I love all that investigative stuff, so it seemed to go really well with me, so happy to come forward.
Any questions? Counselor Grohl.
Hi, Catherine, 2 quick questions. One, tell me about how you feel about the transparency and legitimacy of our own local elections. Thank you very much. Do you feel confident in the, in the local elections and the way that elections are held?
Yeah, it's good that you asked that question, and I had said this to Grace when I was volunteering in the office, because a lot of people don't feel that. As you probably know, a lot of people in the community have some really, I said, you know what you should do? Volunteer for a day. Come and sit in the office, see how hard all these ladies and gentlemen work in that office, because they work really hard. And being the warden really set me up to look and see how it's run, what's done. There's a lot of manual stuff in there. But everyone works really hard to make sure it's done properly. So can there be work to be done? Absolutely.
The second question I have, and I meant to ask this last time we had an appointment up there. Who do you believe won the 2020 presidential election?
Me.
Who do you believe won the 2020 presidential election?
The person who sat at the chair.
Sorry?
Whoever won.
Who would that be?
Geez, I'm not sure. There you go.
Counselor Majota.
I supported you in ONA, I said a lot of good things. You're a great member to the community, very, very respected, and you have my support this evening.
Thank you, Nigel, thank you.
On a motion by Counselor Grace, seconded by Counselor Majota, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted 3 in favor, 0 opposed, to recommend the City Council appoint Catherine Goodick to the Board of Registitors of Voters, termed to end 2/15/2028, and I so move.
Second. A discussion. Counselor Worthley.
Thank you, Catherine, thank you for volunteering, I'm happy to vote for you. I feel like you're someone who has learned from the inside in terms of volunteering and working in the polling places. You know the City Clerk's office really well. And I think your confidence in our local election says a lot about our office, but also the volunteers and the people who work our polls. So it's a big job and a lot of responsibility, but every vote counts, as you know, and every vote will be counted. So thank you for your participation, and I look forward to seeing your good work.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Catherine.
Counselor Gilman.
So 10 years ago, Catherine Goodick ran for Ward 4. And I think that that is also a good thing for a person to have gone through. And I just wanted to remind all of you and let you all know that since that time, we've had a wonderful relationship. And she's always reached out to me to talk about issues that might have been tense for her. And that's a really good feeling when you have someone that can really be diplomatic and talk through the issues, and I do appreciate that, so thank you. We also have backgrounds in human resource we've shared, so thank you.
Thank you, Val.
Counselor Benson.
Thank you, and I, Ms. Goodick, and I appreciate all of your passion for our community. I remember you coming before, oral communication, speaking regarding a concern that you have. I really do appreciate all of your love for Gloucester. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Counselor Nolan.
Catherine, I have known you for 10 years, I like and respect you. I believe that you understand that the way votes are cast, in at least Gloucester, where you have seen them. And there's no manipulation of how things go. However, I am a little upset that you still look at 2020 as being a fraud.
I did not say that.
Right, you said that you didn't know who won the election.
Joe Biden won the election, but I felt like I was being baited to answer that.
No, it's something that's important, this is, this is a real thing, and I support you. But the way we handle things around here is 100% upfront, on board, and transparent. And a conspiracy of something I can't prove, and no one else can really prove. But I do think that Jason did make a good point in asking the question. And I actually thank him for making that point. I understand how it works, and I understand you, and I'm gonna support you tonight. But I do want people to understand that what happens nationally has nothing to do what happens in the city of Gloucester. We have a lot of people that want to talk about how we spend money, or how we don't spend money. There's nothing hidden here. And our Clerk's office works harder than most offices in the city of Gloucester to make sure that everybody is heard and represented in their votes. But thank you for your time, and also, Jason, thank you for actually asking a hard question, because people do want to know. And I appreciate your answer, with you telling me it was Joe Biden.
Yeah.
Thank you.
For sure.
Yeah, I too was taken a little aback by the non-answer. You know, if that's, if you believe that the, in the integrity of our election systems, I think, you know, if you look at real, the statistics, it's voter fraud is pretty miniscule. And it's not limited to just one section or one party. So it's pretty evenly divided, if, you know, and it is, then, you know, rated as a pretty secure elections in this country. And so I'm glad that you did clarify that, because it was a little, it took me a little back.
Well, it took me aback to the question, I was like, I didn't know what, I just got a little stumbled on that, because I don't believe that there was any voter fraud in that. And I don't believe that, I don't believe the election was stolen, I don't believe any of that stuff.
Okay, thank you, that's very reassuring, thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor Grace.
Hi, Catherine, again. I just want to say thank you for being a lifelong resident who is stepping up and volunteering your time, because so often on many of the commissions and boards, it's people that moved here, fell in love with the community, and then volunteered. So it's nice to see somebody that has always been a part of this community, realizing how important it is to get involved.
Thank you.
Counselor Grohl.
Thank you. Yeah, there's no intention of shocking you. It seemed a fairly straightforward question to me, frankly, and I...
I apologize.
A question that I wish I had asked the last person in your role, because I do feel very strongly that our elections are fair and fully transparent. I think the incidence of voter fraud and conspiracy about voting fraud is, as Counselor Grohl said, miniscule. That we live in a country, for better or for worse, that manages to get through the, and we don't, we don't vote... and we don't vote as much as we should. Our voter turnout is abysmal and terrible, and things like that, that doubt and that, the aspersions cast on that election hamper.
Absolutely.
It makes people not vote. It makes them not participate. So when someone asks the question, "Who won that election?", we should be able to say it was, you know, that person in this election. I'm not a particular fan of the current seat in government, but I would never say that I thought Trump stole the election.
No, I agree. So that, I just was taken aback. I was like, I apologize.
Okay, I'll take, take into consideration that. I was frankly, I was going to vote against you tonight, but I will, I will, I will take you at face value and your word, and I will support you tonight. And I trust that you will do a good job at what needs to be, I think, one of the most important things that we have going in this community.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Counsel Memard.
Yes. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. I will be supporting you tonight, and I appreciate this discussion and the frankness and openness about it. It's really what makes all of us great. And there are differences, but we run a clean ship here, and we have a lot of passion, and we love our community. So thank you for stepping up to the job in the registrar's office, in the registrar. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Counsel Benson.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Goodick, for clarifying that.
Yeah.
And I apologize for my being aminated. I was not sure, and I'm glad you were able to clarify that. And I concur with my fellow counselors and everyone here that the cornerstone of any democracy, including the United States, which is the oldest living democracy in the world, cornerstone is free and fair elections. And what we, what we have seen is we've seen slipping away. But I just, I appreciate that. And with that being said, I will be supporting you. And for full disclosure, I was also, from the beginning, after that answer, I wasn't going to support you, but for you clarifying and being honest, I will be supporting you. So thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, nine to zero. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Next, oh, no. Counsel Nolan.
We have next up for the Gloucester Historical Commission, Julie Travers. I believe she's online. Julie, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
How are you doing tonight? Can you just tell the full counsel a little bit about yourself?
Yes, I am, my name is Julie Travers. I'm the local history librarian at the Sawyer Free Library. And I'm really excited to be considered to be on the Gloucester Historical Commission. I've been volunteering on that commission for about a year and a half, working with them closely on the preservation awards. I do a lot of historic house research for them. And I'm just really, you know, passionate about, about the history of, you know, in the city of Gloucester, so just excited to be, to be part of the commission.
Excellent. I'll read the motion, then we'll ask for counsel questions. On a motion by Counsel Grace, seconded by Counsel Majota, the Orders Administration Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the City Council appoint Julie Travers to the Gloucester Historical Commission, termed in 215, 2027, and I so move.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Counselor Memard.
Julie, welcome. Thank you for the work you do. And I, just compared to where you're working now, I think that you and all the rest of the community are looking forward to the new space at the Gloucester Sawyer Free Library and the new history quarters that you will be overseeing down there. So congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we're really excited. Should be coming up soon.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes, thank you again for volunteering and for working with the Historical Commission over the last, I think you said, year and a half. I think you'll find, and anybody who's volunteering, that they're a very active group. You'd think Historical Commission would be people who are, you know, not going to be as active, but they're very active. They're very forward-thinking, even though looking at history and in terms of preservation, documenting different buildings and those sorts of things. So I look forward to your work and respect the work that they do and the fun that you're going to have working with them. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, ready to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, nine to zero.
Thank you.
Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda.
Would anyone like to pull any matters off the consent agenda? Counsel Worthley.
It's the March 20th Budget and Finance minutes, please.
I move, I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
No, I have, I want to remove something, too.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Didn't hear that.
Under counsel orders, number two, CC 2025, number 20, Worthley, M&amp;GCO, Chapter 22, traffic and motor vehicles. I would like that to first be vetted through legal before we send it into the pipeline so that we have that that taken care of, so that it can, it can move through ONA and get to the public hearing without any holdups.
In what timeframe do you expect them to get a response? And what's the next step? Like, they tell you, and then you put it on the agenda, or they tell me?
You have to submit it to legal.
So I've done the work, but now I got to do the work of just sending an email saying, can you look at this?
Send an email with it, yeah.
Okay, but if there's a month, six weeks, eight weeks, two years, like, what's the point where I can say, "I need to put this forward" and not wait on the legal department?
You bug me.
I bug you?
Yes.
How about I cease to see on the email, so there's a reply to all that way?
Oh, absolutely. And it should be moved forward pretty... Everyone here who submitted them to legal has gotten a pretty rapid response. So it's not, it's not to hold it up. It's to
Understand.
We've had repeated lately, we've had repeated things that have gone through, and some of it has cost us money that needed to go through legal first.
I understand that. Okay, I'll do that.
Hey, Counsel Gilman.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Do you want to discuss why Budget and Finance minutes off? We can amend that potentially?
Yeah, I think we need to vote. We vote on those separately?
We usually do, we usually do what I just did first, and then we go back to the ones that we have done.
So it's amended with them off.
Right, so you have an opportunity to... Right now, I'll bring it on.
So we have to have that vote first.
Motion made by Counsel Gilman, seconded by Counsel Groh. Any discussion on the motion to accept consent agenda as amended? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, nine to zero. Counsel Worthley.
Yes, I attended part of the Budget and Finance meeting. I had to leave, so I made a point to read the minutes. And there are two, I don't want to blame on anybody for the two spelling mistakes that changed the meaning of the minutes. On page seven, there's a word compressive, which actually is a word, but it, I think it means meant to be comprehensive. I think it's one of those things where you're typing and it autofilled, and that was the word there. And then also on page nine, the word dam could be spelled two different ways. And
Oh, with an N?
It's in two places. It's spelled with an N. So, you know, I know people might have been frustrated that night with the Pascal pond dam, but not that upset, right?
No, that one was a good one.
Yes, right.
Nobody was, you know, it wasn't dam to dam.
Right, but I just noticed that, and there's two cases. I can certainly let the Clerk's office know exactly where that was. That was page nine. The two words were spelled differently. Not many to spell differently, but you got it. Page seven for the first one and page nine for the second.
I apologize for that catch.
It's okay. No problem. Don't say I don't do my homework.
I move to amend the minutes of the last B&amp;F meeting, as noted.
Second. Motion made by Counsel Gilman, seconded by Counsel Groh. All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we move to accept the minutes now?
No, now we have to go to the one that I pulled off. No. Oh, okay, correct. Sorry. We need to make a motion to approve these minutes and then file them. Second. Oh, I guess I made the motion.
Motion made by Counsel Groh, seconded by Counsel Nolan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, then the next one, I think I already explained. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Do we need to make a motion to send it to legal?
Probably. Counsel Groh.
I just want to say that I'm actually really glad that you brought this forward, because I think that we're going to save a lot of time, a lot of energy, and a lot of effort in getting things, things cleared up well in advance, so that we're not arguing over things that should have been invited by legal in the first place. So kudos to you for that.
All right. Save the rest of the discussion until after the motion's been made.
No, Counsel Worthley was in them.
Move to refer the matter to the legal department for their opinion.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Worthley, seconded by Counsel Gilman. Any discussion?
Could we send it to, like, pending legal tenant traffic, or it comes back to counsel first, then we would send it to those committees?
Legal first. Let's make sure that all the ayes are dotted and the t's are crossed and
Makes sense.
And that there isn't anything that we don't know about in Massachusetts or federal law.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, nine to zero. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Budget and Finance Standing Committee report from March 20th, 2025.
Counsel Memard.
Thank you. We have a few items for your consideration tonight. The first was the most exciting one by far, and it's a memorandum from our, our city clerk in her office requesting our acceptance of a donation which involves 219 voting booths. Slightly used, but in excellent condition, and these are from the city of Woburn due to some good detective work by our city clerk. And they have an estimated value of $11,000, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Memard, seconded by Counsel Worthley. Discussion.
We have to read the recommendation actually, as written.
We should.
I'll do the
May I recommend that we, yeah, that we read the recommendation?
Sure.
On a motion by myself, seconded by Counsel Gilman, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council accept under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, 53A and a half, a tangible donation of 219 voting booths from the city of Woburn with an estimated value of $11,000. Nice move.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Memard, seconded by Counsel Gilman. Discussion. Counsel Worthley.
Just want to add on to what Counsel Memard said. I'd like to commend the City Clerk's office and Grace Poirier specifically for identifying this opportunity and saving the city a lot of money. And in reading the minutes, I think I read that we won't need to buy these booths potentially for another 30 years, 25, 30 years?
It's 219 of them. It will probably last for a long time.
Right. I threw that out there so you could actually have to correct me and actually speak, so thank you for adding that. So this will last a long time?
I anticipate them lasting a long time.
Could extend your entire career.
Could be. Hopefully, I don't have to think about it again.
Right, awesome. Good work.
Yeah. Counsel Grace.
I was just going to say, you know, great work. One city's trash is another city's treasure. So awesome. And thanks. And thank you to the city of Woburn as well.
I think, didn't they get a grant to buy new ones, something?
I believe they did, because of these, so not only did we save $11,000 by purchasing new, I mean, but if we were purchasing these new, we would be spending, you know, roughly, I think it was almost $40,000 if we purchased this many voting booths new, so that the, you know, used value of them is 11,000, but there could have been a lot of money being spent that the city could have been paying out. So I'm really, you know, grateful to Woburn as well for offering these to us.
Counsel Nolan.
So I think it's going to be a kudos to the Clerk's office tonight, because we did that during the registrar thing, and how we run a tight ship. Grace, you guys really worked hard, and it was impressive. You found a need for something, and I hope that, you know, we can always back you up when you're looking for something that you can't find anymore. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know if you get, everybody must remember the voting booths that we had that were pretty flimsy. And the DPW was, told us that they were at the end of life, and they needed to be turned into something else aluminum. And it, these came, this was a very, very fortuitous donation that we, or not donation, but in kind that we got from Woburn. And they're pretty rugged.
Would it be appropriate, Mr. President, to, I don't know if we'd add to our amendment and to ask the Clerk's office to send a thank you note on behalf of the City Council? Or the best for the city of Gloucester? I mean, you can obviously thank the clerk that you know that connected, but could we do something on behalf of the whole group?
That was asked in B&amp;F, and I will send a letter.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, nine to zero.
Item number two from Budget and Finance tonight is a memorandum from the police chief and 2025 SBT number 16 in the amount of $9,171.75, and this is to pay for vehicles. I'll read the motion. On a motion by myself, seconded by Counsel Gilman, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve a special budgetary transfer, 2025 SBT number 16, in the amount of $9,171.75, from Police Uniform Personal Services salaries, account number is noted, to Police Uniform Capital Outlay Vehicles, account number is noted, and this is for the purpose of paying for a portion of a replacement police cruiser, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Memard, seconded by Counsel Worthley. Discussion.
As, as the chief noted to us, this is a, this is the balance due after insurance proceeds for a police vehicle that was, was damaged and considered a total loss. And this is the balance due, which gets us a brand-new vehicle for the department. So it worked out all right, considering nobody was hurt.
Counsel Worthley.
As you noted, Mr. President, in the meeting, essentially for $9,100, we're getting, and obviously they put a lot of miles on these, and they're a big demand, but these could last quite some time. So $9,100 to get a 2026 vehicle is pretty impressive.
In exchange for a 2017 vehicle.
Right.
Yes.
Well, as an exchange, it was total.
Well, it was, we, we lost a 2017 vehicle, and we're getting a 2026.
I said it was to our advantage.
Absolutely.
Very much. Very much. This is the difference between the insurance payout.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, nine to zero.
Item number three is a memorandum from the Director of Public Health, who's here with us tonight, requesting approval of a fee change request regarding rental registry regulation from $90 per unit to $30 per unit per property. And Dominique, do you want to go ahead and make the presentation before I read the full motion?
Hi, everybody. I'm here joined with Rob Bakari, because there's not a lot that increasingly we don't work together on. In this case, we work really closely in both preparing how this might operate, and then, and it also reflects on how his department will be impacted as well. So tag-team this a little bit. So for the record, Dominique Curley, Director of Public Health.
Rob Bakari, Building Commissioner.
And I'm going to start by talking about the overall approach we're taking for fee changes. We in the Health Department haven't done a fee change since 2007, and I think you've heard this from a few other departments as well, and we want to update it so that the work that we're doing is, is paid for appropriately by those that are incurring that expense. The Board of Health has been in alignment with our approach to all of our fee changes. Tonight, you're going to see one set of them. And we believe that as we look at fee changes, we're going to improve value to the community. We're going to assure compliance to state and local regulations, and we're really looking to drive the appropriate amount of revenue to support the work that's done by the department. So throughout this entire process, what we followed for all of our fee changes, and you'll see this again as we talk it through tonight, is a four-pronged approach to making sure that we really thought this through carefully. The first is we just looked at inflation. So if you look at a dollar in 2007, that's, that is about $1.58 in today's, in today's spend, so, you know, 58 cents increase in cost. We also built cost-return models, looking really carefully, and this is, the word models is actually a link, so. models, looking really carefully. And this is, the word models is actually a link. So happy to share this document with you all so you can click in and look at the work we've done. But we've done really careful assessment of all the work that we're doing per inspection type, per person type, calculated that out, looking at a base rate of about 50 bucks an hour. We assume average salary of 65,000 with 33% fringe, which our treasurer said is about fair. We now can look at how much we cost versus how much we're bringing into the city. So that's a quite extensive spreadsheet and a lot of our base work was founded there. We also look actively at the value of the service that we're bringing to the city. So looking at the activity that we take on, the impact that we're having and the available time that we have. And I know last year when I spoke to you during, to the Budget and Finance Committee during budget season, you know, it was pretty clear that there's a lot of things that traditionally the Health Department is accountable for, but wasn't, wasn't necessarily historically doing. And so we've really been tracking hard against that and have been shoring that up. But throughout, we're always looking at the value that we're bringing to the community in that work. Of course, staying compliant to state guidelines, who is our ultimate guiding, lighting what we have to do. And then finally, we're comparing ourselves to other towns and looking at how other towns have charged for similar fees. Makes sense? So from a process of review standpoint, what you're looking at tonight is this first one, which is a rental fee update. It's a wholesale change in how we ensure safety and habitability, which is our charter as it relates to rental properties in the city. It ties to expanded collaboration with the Building Department, which you'll hear more about in a minute, and some ordinance impact. After this, you're going to hear about septic fee updates where we again are going to change our fees to more closely mirror the complexity of the work that we do. So for simple work, fees will stay low. For more complex work, greater scrutiny, greater time taken to ensure that plans and work is compliant, prices are going to go up. And we're going to come before Budget and Finance for that one next, and then hopefully before city council as well. After that, following, that is food. Food again is changing the approach in terms of how we oversee safety by moving to state recommended risk assessment. And our fees are going to exchange, are going to again reflect the work that's done in some cases for a very compliant business or a very, you know, simply run business. Those costs are staying low. For more complex or more, you know, food establishment that might require more of our time, they're going to be going up. And then in all other cases, we have a lot of other responsibilities that we're accountable for. And we're making sure that all of the fees and changes that we're proposing are again being covered in that four-pronged approach. So you're seeing the first one, rental fee updates tonight. Hope that's helpful for you as you look at the work that we've done to prepare for this. All right. So here we are tonight looking for approval of a $30 rental registration fee. That's a, that's a decrease in price from $90. $90 today has you coming into our platform, signing up as a rental property. We go through the process of ensuring that you're valid, you're valid to rent by zoning, by conferring with our, our friends in building, and then we go ahead and perform an inspection. And that, you know, that costs $90. We're proposing that we change that wholesale and move this to $30. And instead of doing an inspection, and you'll hear why we're stopping doing inspections in a minute, instead of doing inspection, we think it's more important that we have the landlord acknowledge the requirements that are before them across all of our regulations that go beyond just safety and habitation. We think that we're going to have improved participation and compliance. We think we're going to create a comprehensive database to really help us understand the size of the rental community here in Gloucester. We're going to be eliminating redundant inspections, which the Building Department is increasingly taking over more responsibility, given the change in, in state law as well as some ordinance changes. It's going to therefore free up time for our health and housing inspector to spend time on case management. More on that in a second. And again, it's going to produce other benefits as well, such as building a better relationship with our property owners in the city and being able to offer value to our rental property owners. And we'll talk about that in a second as well. In general, we're going to save about 400 hours, giving them back to the inspector to work on case management. We're going to offer the $60 price reduction to our, to our landlords. And if you have multiple units, that's sizable savings for our landlords. And we are still, despite all that, going to be doubling year-over-year revenue from 23 to about 45. So let me tell you how that's going to work. So first of all, looking at the first prong of our assessment, we did a historical look at non, of, you know, compliance in the city. And we have really pretty abysmal compliance. We are required to do the work that I described. We estimate there's about 5,000 rental units total in the city. And that's based on U.S. Census data that tells us that we have 13,259 households and 61% of them are owner occupied. So we're assuming the remainder of those, a total market potential of 5,000 rental properties in Gloucester. Of those 5,000 rental properties potential, we only know of 1,400 of them in the history of all of our records. We spent a great deal of time digging through all that, that paper and, and figuring out exactly where are the, where are the rental properties. And we currently only permit 560 units total. So from 5,000 potential market to 560 units totally being permitted, that's a pretty abysmal compliance rate. We have, you know, that turns into about 250 plus units we have to inspect every year. And the fun fact that we learned from an interns project last summer was that 90% of the complaints that come are from unpermitted properties. And so, you know, we have abysmal permitting compliance. We also have a lot of complaints that are coming from those that are not even registering with us. And I have a quote here from a Gloucester landlord that it pretty much sizes up what we've heard from many of those in our community. Why would I pay you to come in and tell me to spend more money when I'm trying to keep rent down? And so this is the fact, you know, we have the law that we're supposed to attend to, which is making sure that 105 CMR, 410 is met, that we meet the essential health and safety requirements. And then we have our Gloucester Board of Health requirements that are in place to make sure that our landlords know how to make a place safe and habitable. And we do that in our current regulations via inspection. However, this slide, I hope, shows you that that is not effective. Right? So move on. So the next thing that's coming up as a factor to consider is we have changes in state building codes and ordinances. That's going to create an opportunity for even more collaboration with the Building Department. The city, the city ordinances, and again, this building code is going to make the work that Rob has to do expand. So properties that we might normally have inspected are now also going to be inspected by the Building Department. And we already had overlap before. In fact, oftentimes, our housing inspector will accompany the Building Department, double labor to go do really similar things. I mean, we might turn on the hot water. We might check to make sure there's a screen door, but we're checking everything else that they're already checking. So we have duplicative labor already. And now with these changes coming, there's even going to be more duplicative labor. So it's not that the buildings aren't going to be inspected. It's that the, the Building Department increasingly is going to take on a bigger role in that. So I don't know if you want to say anything more about that, Rob?
Yeah, so with.
The microphone, Rob, sorry.
With a lot of the code changes and some ordinance changes, my department's going to be required to have to do a more, more of these multi-safety inspections to do with all these sorts of rental properties. So it just made more sense. And the way she's approaching this would give us a better idea of what we actually have in the city for rental properties to give everyone an opportunity to realize what kind of data we actually have in the city, whether, how many multifamilies we have, just in general, just to understand what we have in the housing market in the city.
Thanks, Rob. So in this graphic, this, I call it my, my St. Patrick's Day graphic, is, you know, sort of a Venn diagram demonstrating all the overlap of all the factors that we have to consider as we manage rental properties. So are you on a septic system? Are you a non-resident or resident? Are you owner occupied? Are you an apartment building? Are you a single-family property, multifamily, two-family? All of those factors come together to turn into workload for one of our departments. How many units do you have? You know, are you compliant to your current taxes? You know, are you in fact zoned to be a rental property? These are all the things that we check when we're working on this, on this area for our city. And you see those four quadrants here of health and building having an opportunity to intersect. But that also impacts planning and, and the assessor's office and understanding what we really have going on. In the bottom left-hand corner is a bunch of mouse type. But what that tells you is the differing perspectives between, as an example, the assessor's office and the Health Department in just what are the number of properties we have. So across the city, we all have a perspective on where these properties are. And, and as we look at how we're going to support the work that's going to come from the changing laws and ordinances, it's really important that we get ahead of that and, and think about how we can grow our understanding of this market and the accuracy of it. And, and we believe that we will, you know, in our plan that we're about to show you, reduce and remove a lot of the duplicative labor in our departments. The third thing that's important to understand is the time that it's spent, that is spent on a housing inspection. So if we were to go in and do a full inspection the way that 410 CMR tells us to do it, it's about three hours of time. Three hours of time at 262 properties per year is like 480 plus hour, 780 plus hours, which I believe, I don't have my number directly in front of me, but I believe that's almost half of the labor available. And so when we look at the time that we have available and the revenue we're getting from it, you know, the cost, the current fee is $90. The actual spend of time at our current path is $150. So we're losing money massively at that $90. Again, we're inspecting double labor and we're inspecting at a super low compliance rates. What we're forced to do is simplify that inspection because we know building is already doing it. We've already worked with them to know that they're zoned properly. And so we're spending a far less time on it. So we're also not doing service to the state law that guides our behavior in this process. The law does not require that we inspect, except in the case of a complaint, or we can do it periodically as we like. The law allows us to set laws as we have before, saying that we can have as a condition for rental, the right to inspect. But the law does not require us to inspect. The law just wants us to be sure that the landlord has a good understanding of what is safe and habitable. So as this number grows, as caseloads grows, as number of rental properties grow, we increasingly will both be losing money, doubling labor. And it's just, it's just not worth it. You can see the annual cost being about $39,000 in labor, and we're only bringing in a total of 23. And then finally, if we look at, you know, the why of this, you know, so why are property owners not complying? You know, why do I have such a low compliance rate? It's lack of awareness. Do people not know? Do they know that their apartment's not compliant? I mean, we've directly heard that they want to keep their rents down and they don't want us to come in and expect at the clip that we do. Is it an illegal unit? Is it the cost of the inspection that they have to pay? And then the cost of repairs on top of that? So if we look at that, like, why are they not complying and what can we do to improve it? You know, we want to expand self-enrollment. We want to reduce the cost to the owner. We want to move from inspection to education. We think we'll be more effective at that. And we want to provide incentive to register. These are sort of the strategic ideas that came out of looking at our problems. Can we encourage more property owners to understand and act on their obligations as a landlord by reducing the cost or giving them access to services? So we believe if we came up with a strategy whereby we could improve the number of people to self-identify by delivering them a service, then, you know, maybe more would come. So as an example, can I connect them to financial relief for repairs on their building? Can we help the registration as a prerequisite for other department services, as an example, building and some of the new programs that they're going to be supporting? And can we provide access to grant funding, as an example, if you are in fact registered and educated by the city on the laws that you're supposed to attend to? And then finally, at the current inspection requirements, do we have any way possibly meeting the obligation with our current, you know, regulation? No, the answer's no to that. We don't have the time. And, and it's just, we feel wholly ineffective. So we want to get rid of the duplicative inspecting. We want to inspect and have our time for housing complaints and case resolution, which takes a long time to do well. And they're languishing right now because of the time we have available. We'd rather spend our time educating the public and then fine people for being non-com, non-complaint, but non-compliant. So here's our plan. It's working together with the Building Department to build the Gloucester Rental Registry. Other towns have done this quite effectively, giving the Health Department and the city of Gloucester, the Building Department and many other departments as well, a better overview of our rental properties, providing consistent and accurate property information on them. That little flower bud in the bottom there is the data that we would be collecting, you know, who are you, are, you know, are you an owner? Do you have a property management company? Are you owner occupied? How many units? Where are the units, et cetera? And so its primary goal is to educate owners about their responsibilities. And, but the, but the end result is that we're also building a overall understanding of the rental market, who is renting, what kind of rentals we have, and then being able to properly be sure that these landlords are, are both communicated with and educated as needed. How it would work, and you can see it in the upper left-hand corner of this graphic, the applicant comes in and registers and provides the details to the city of Gloucester. When they click in and tell us who they are, then they're going to then open up and look at the regulations that are required of how they should be a landlord, what are the requirements of being a landlord. That's all going to be done in Open Gov. That information will all be captured and will be available for other departments to use that can branch off to do business tree logic for the work that Rob has to do to understand what inspections he has to manage, what payments, what inspection triggers might have to happen, how, and then of course, we can manage housing complaints. We often do that together. And being able to do ad hoc analysis, so for example, as the city council might want. So we believe that this process is streamlined and likely going to be much more effective in bringing in our landlords and getting them engaged and hopefully educating them as well. So at the end of that long soliloquy with a quick soundbite from Rob, and Rob has had a lot of time in this, so I don't, just because he didn't say very much doesn't mean he didn't have a whole lot of contribution here. I'm just the mouthpiece. So we're going from the certificate of rental dwelling, about 262 inspections per year, very low number, current fee 90 bucks, costing 150. If we look at total annual hours done right, we'd make a total revenue of 23. If I look at the rental registration, 1,500, we believe is, I use that number because that's, we know about 1,400 in the history of the city that have registered with us. We know of a lot more properties, as I said, total potential market of 5,000 rental properties out there. But just looking conservatively at 1,500, at 30 bucks instead of 90 bucks, cost to deliver is $13, dramatically cheaper. And, you know, obviously already doubling the revenue. And as it grows, we believe it'll be a nice way for us to bring in the revenue that it takes to properly support our landlords. It will also be able to help us fund the work that we're going to be doing to bring value to those landlords. I think if the Health Department and the registration with the city of you as a landlord is a precursor for you to get access to other services that the city has to offer, I think that would be a great way to make sure that folks are all checking in with us. And we already have an example of that with, you know, Section 8, you know, and Gloucester Housing requires that you are cleared by the Health Department before they will allow you to be a Section 8 landlord, as an example. So that's one example of an organization, you know, being sure that the landlords are following the law. And if we do that also for other rewards, such as building improvements and the like, I think it could be really effective. So in conclusion, we'll have 5X increase in registered properties, about 400 hours saved, avoid double billing, and our labor of our departments is freed up to do the things that they're best served to do. And we think it's going to be a revenue growth, not a cut. That's rapid fire talk, I know. But can I answer any questions or can we answer any questions?
Questions first. Counselor Grow.
Wow. I'm, I'm literally blown away by this. And the first thing I want to say is thank you for coming up with a new solution to what is clearly a problem that's been going on for a long time. I'm blown away by the fact that we know of basically less than a quarter of our rental units. That means that there are 3,500 or so, 4,000 rental units that, that aren't even on the radar, which is mind-boggling to me. So the questions I have, and we'll get to questions instead of this speech. First thing is, why are you not asking for more inspectors?
Well, this is not the year to be doing that, for sure.
I don't know. I'm not, I'm not sure I agree with you on that front. I mean, it seems to me that the sheer number of hours that is needed to do the task requires more human beings to do it. So personally, I would support that. But more, I'm interested in, you, you say that landlords need a certificate. What's the penalty for non-registration? that landlords need a certificate. What's the penalty for non-registration? And who's looking out for the tenants in this situation? Because those are the people I think that are in danger of being taken advantage of by landlords that are not literally willing to follow the basic law.
Yeah. Thank you for that question. So that gray in that little pie chart at the bottom, the red, are the total people that are, 10% of total complaints come from those who have registered with us, and, you know, 90% are those that aren't. So of the people that are not self-identifying, those are also the folks that are housing cases. So how do we hear about them? We hear about them when we get a phone call from a tenant, and we have to go inspect. And again, often it's us, building and health, and sometimes fire as well, also a compadre most of the, most times. And then we'll be working with our community organizations like Action to help figure out the best process to solve the problem.
How many tenants are likely to reach out if they, if they're, I mean, the danger is that you end up getting evicted. Because we don't have rent control, we don't have safeties in place for tenants. So a tenant calling you up, it's got to be a pretty damn bad problem.
Yeah. That's illegal for you to, you know, to take it out on your tenant. But there are people that are afraid of that. We have language barriers as well. And it's a sizable problem. To get on those cases and handle them quickly and really stay on top of them takes a lot of effort. It's a lot of people to talk to and coordinate, including our legal, our legal department as well. So it's a lot, and it is, you know, you know, again, the majority of the health inspector's time right now is being spent on what I, I'm going to say it's frivolous inspection, right? Because it's duplicated in almost every case. And clearly, it's not making the difference in those that are being harmed.
First of all, right off the bat, great job, both of you. Unbelievable. Great presentation.
Also, other members of my health department, Bree Turco, Gabby White, definitely spent a lot of time on this as well, all of our fees.
That's what makes you a great team leader, right there. Everything that you have said makes sense. There are so many people that don't do the things that are right. And the one thing I will say, and it is a question, why not $40?
Because we want the barrier to entry to be very low. You know, our goal is to get to maximize the number of landlords who self-identify. And we think the price point is, it's, you know, $13 is the cost. So we're making plenty of money on that. And it's, we really want the barrier, the threshold to be low. That was a conscious decision. It's what also other communities have charged around that amount as well.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Dominique and Rob.
Counselor Benson.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation, Director. When you said other communities, I, that was my, quite, just popped into my mind. You said they have it right around 30. Does that lead to more, it's leading to landlords filing? Does that kind of what, if that makes sense, that question, having that lower fee is leading to?
Because I don't know that other communities have had the same challenge that we've had. It's a great question. I'll be able to tell you in a year.
Okay. No, I appreciate it. And just to follow up, when I'm, as we're looking at this, does this include also, this will include lodging houses as well? So like rooms to rent, halfway houses type of thing, or no?
No, lodging houses, rooming houses, all require a license from the licensing board. It's a completely different aspect of what's required.
Okay. Thank you. Just because some people may be curious about that, and I was as well. So thank you.
I'd just like to follow up from the presentation that you gave us at Budget and Finance, and Bree accompanied you there. But it's obviously a lot of good work by yourselves, Rob and his office. And I think that, this is, as Counselor Grow said, this is a powerful presentation that reflects a lot of thought and research and just good constructive thinking. And I think it's a first step in a program that you've laid out here that looks like it's going to, has the kiss of success in terms of what it's going to try and accomplish. So thank you and congratulations for this presentation.
Thank you. And I should add also that our, the chairman of our board, Joe Rosa, is also adamant about, you know, making sure that people feel pressure to sign up and have the fines, if the state allows us to charge $500. And so, you know, with this ease of access, will also come, you know, board support of finding those. In particular, if a complaint is lodged against you and you're not registered, you know, we're going to move very quickly to bringing you up in front of the board. So there will, there's a lot of carrot here to help be informative and provide value. But there's also a stick because it's important that you, you know, you follow the law.
Counselor Gilman.
So I'm going to spend most of my time in the discussion deliberations after the motion, but I do have kind of a question to follow up on what Counselor Grow said about why aren't you asking for more inspectors. Obviously, we are aware that this year's budget is going to be really tough. But I guess I would ask the question to just keep a pulse on what other municipalities are staffed, and then bring that back, not this year, but maybe the next year in the budget process. So we know what other municipalities of our size with the amount of multifamily and refamily, all the stuff that you showed, right? And give us some numbers so we can just entertain that at a time where we might be able to, to address that.
Yeah, that makes completely, makes complete sense. At least this way we'll have the data to understand how many more we have to do.
Close it to the microphone.
It'll make us understand how many more we'll have to do based on the data we'll receive. So that makes sense.
Thank you.
And I think, at least, I think Rob needs somebody to do that.
Can you?
I think Rob needs this person more than the health department. The health department right now, from an inspectional side, is doing really well with the extra headcount that you gave us last year. We are feeling great. We have other needs on the health services sides, but we're going after grants for that. So I think that we're doing pretty well right now. But I know that he's got a lot of work in front of him. So just be your little mouthpiece for a minute. Rob meets people. So, all right.
Counselor Grow.
Thank you. So if someone doesn't register their, their unit, then they're subject to a $500 fine. Is that, what's, is that one of those things that, $500 per day, $500 a month, $500?
Per day for infraction.
So you can rack up a pretty significant?
Yeah. The challenge is getting people to pay it once it racks up. It's more about very quickly bringing them up in front of the board and making sure that people understand that we're going to be enforcing that.
Right. Yeah. Because again, I appreciate trying to get landlords to do the right thing and to be, you know, proactive. But I'm really worried about tenants. Because at the end of the day, if they don't have a place, a voice, you know, any safeguards that are protecting them, you know, they're, they're maybe inclined not to report these things. Is there a public database of complaints that could be registered that people can see and say, you know, Bob Johnson at 123 Main Street has 18 complaints against him?
Well, certainly, all the work we do is public record. The flip of that, though, is promoting the landlords that have come in and are compliant and have understood their obligations and promoting that list to the tenants that are looking for places. Because that theoretically would be a better landlord. So we want to kind of, again, make that the carrot that we'll provide, you know, and let, let people know about the units that you have. And so, and as it relates to like the cost and getting very quickly, we want to be able to make it easily enforceable, which is a challenge. Most of the landlords that, that we're running into, with some exceptions, aren't aware of the law, are trying to save money, you know, they're, they're not necessarily fully versed. And so this is an effort to make sure that they're fully versed on what their obligations are. And our case person is spending a lot of time educating that landlord and really, you know, oftentimes connecting them to methods. Like, Action is an important partner for us in building improvements. You know, the resident is applying, but the building is improved. So there's lots of different ways that we're working on that.
I'm perhaps a little bit more cynical about people not knowing the law, given most people are going to look into these things before they rent out too. Again, I would say, given the fact that we've given you the short-term rental burden to deal with, and that, speaking as one counselor of nine, I would fully support an increase in personnel in your department to deal with inspections. Because the sooner we get a handle on this, and the sooner we get a, I mean, the fact that we only know about one-fourth of our apartments seems crazy to me. Obviously, it's not, I'm not laying that on you, but it's, it's, it's kind of insane that, it'd be like not knowing about one, you know, three-quarters of the houses that are built in Gloucester.
This is on the fee.
Yeah, I know. What's that?
This is on the fee.
It's on the fee, but it's on the fact that the fee is inhibiting, that has been inhibiting inspections, whatnot. But it's all about the realization that this is a woefully underfunded department that needs to be funded so it can do its job.
I have a couple of questions. So is the Board of Health changing its regulations on inspections?
Yes. The Board of Health has approved the regulation change. We are in the final draft of it. We're having a public hearing on both our new septic regulations, as well as our rental regulations on the 10th of April. And the announcements went to the newspaper today.
And, and if you do have to do an inspection, is it free now? Comes with a $30 registration if you have to go do an inspection, or do you just rely on the Board of Health? I mean, the, the building inspector?
Yeah, we're relying on the building department to do the majority of the inspections. And of course, we reserve the right, and in our regulations, we say we reserve the right if we suspect, you know, there's an issue, or there's a history of issue, that we reserve the right to come in and impromptu inspect. We don't charge for those inspections. Today, you get a, you know, if we have a complaint, we don't charge the landlord for managing that complaint. That's not part of the, interesting to think about, but it's not part of the fee structures that we have right now.
And you'll be kind of a clearinghouse a little bit, or a, a, not advisory, but you'll be able to, I guess, advise landlords on the programs like Action Energy, where they come in and do improvements on the building, and CBDG, Grants Community Development Block Grants, that also landlords can take advantage of. I know I did when I had a three-family, 50/50 loans. I also, Action Energy got interest-free loans and insulation. So it really is, if you, and also, do you have, maybe, and resources for landlords that have to do de-letting, which can be rather expensive, which I also have to perform. So, yeah, I, I think that this, you know, what you've really done is you deregulated a little bit here. And you've lowered the cost by making the, like you said, the duplicate in services that were being done was just, you know, because there was no cross-communication. Now, you two have really moved that forward, and that's really, thank you for doing that, for making a cost savings for the city on effort. You know, we still have the cost, but the effort, sometimes you can't, can't quite get to everything. And that's, thank you for this.
And our IT department's working on setting this up, so that'll be like one part of entry and then branching tree logic. And that'll make a big difference as well in terms of the, you know, we'll be able to automatically trigger when inspections have to happen. So there's less labor to look up and maintain, when the technology can kind of feed off the same information. So we're excited about that as well.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Gilman.
So Dominique and Rob, I've got a question for you, which is a little bit pointed. But in my eight years as a ward counselor, there were times where if someone filed a complaint with the Board of Health, that they were willing to anonymously look into the issue, whether it be rats outside because of a compost issue that were getting into houses. Whereas the building department historically was more into needing to get a document from the residents complaining, which was always a little bit awkward, because sometimes people want to be able to report something anonymously and not feel like they're being targeted for being the, the person that brought something forward. Is that something that is typical that, that we can do just to get people feeling comfortable with it? Or do we need to be more structured with getting something in writing?
So for us, I don't need to have, it can be anonymous. We still want it on paper. Do you still have to fill out the form? Well, you don't have to put your name. You don't have to put your number. We just need to know what your complaint is and where it's at. It can always stay anonymous. We don't need to, you know, know who you are. But we need it on paper. It's, it's a legal matter to do with how our process works. I have so many days to respond and then deal with a complaint. So this is why we always want it in writing.
I could just add that we have C Click Fix. So you can go in across building or health and put in an anonymous complaint. And I think building then would take a C Click Fix and turn it into that piece of paper themselves. But, but we operate on C Click Fix, and we run all of our volumetrics off of C Click Fix, which is a fantastic tool for us.
That's really helpful. Thank you.
Counselor Grow.
Stuck on this 75% of departments. So if I'm a renter, and I, and I, and I got a unit, I'm happy with it, and I find out, how do I find out whether or not my, my landlord has, has gotten a certificate? And what do I do if they don't have one?
I believe today you can look them up in the-
Step up the microphone.
I believe today you can look them up in the permitting platform and see if that property has a certificate of rental. I forget what it is, certificate of rental, I forget the name of it now. Sorry, you passed me. But you, but you can look it up in, in our, in our permitting platform, or you could call us and we could let you know. But it's not something a lot of tenants do. They, I don't think a lot of people know about it. So promoting us as a service, I think, would be of value to the tenants also, and helping them understand what their rights are.
Paying the motion.
You like the motion now?
Yes, please.
Okay. Yeah, you can still ask more questions. Committee recommendation on a motion by myself, suggested by Counselor Rose. Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council approve the proposed fee and memo, fee change and memo dated March 5, 2025, as incorporated here too, and presented by the Director of Public Health and as approved by the mayor. And I so move.
Motion made by Counselor Memmard, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Discussion on the motion. Counselor Grow.
I'm going to make it quick. I just would love to have you guys come back in a year and let us know how things are going, what, and whether or not this worked the way you'd hoped it would work, and what we could do to make it even better then.
Counselor Gilman.
So this is such a good thing, because you two are both working so well together on this process. So thank you for your creativity and doing what's right. I will be supporting this for several reasons. First of all, I liked how you calculated the inflation, which was $1 in 2007, and is now $1.58 in 2025. That you also created the cost versus return on investment models, looking at an average salary of 65K with a 33% fringe, coming up with a $50 per hour cost. I also liked how you looked at the fact that this is saving hours of duplicative inspections, which is really important for this. So, and you looked at best practices. You know, you looked at Worcester and other municipalities, and this is really good stuff. So I'm going to be supporting this, and I totally am impressed with your creativity in the way you're looking at this as a process. So thank you.
Counselor Nolan.
Great work. You guys put it together, a great presentation. And as Counselor Grow had said, we can have you back again next year to give us an update. I think the only thing that would actually top this is if you both came back with guitars and sang a little bit.
I could do that. I have a mic right here. Can you play?
Counselor Worthley.
Thank you very much. I just want to recognize the hard work that you've put into getting this presentation to this point. Obviously, I sense this is going to pass, but you should really make sure you know how appreciated you are. And it's leadership, right? You could just do nothing, and there'd be work to be done, and you just keep going, and no one would know the difference. But you're making a difference, both of you. And I just want, you know, I appreciate that. And I think all of us do. Thank you.
Counselor Benson.
Thank you. And I will be supporting this, and I really much appreciate all the work that you put into this. And I know you are really bringing the health department to new heights, and really appreciate it. And I know all the hard work you're doing on so many fronts. Thank you. And thank you to our building inspector. And I know things are challenging at times. We've talked about those things before. So again, I appreciate it, and can't wait to- So again, I appreciate it and can't wait to, and look forward to seeing what you bring forward next year. And again.
Right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it nine to zero. Thank you very, very much.
Good job. Appreciate it.
Ready to move on? The next, the next thing is that we've hired somebody to stick their finger in our dam over at Haskell's. We have a memorandum from the city engineer requesting our acceptance of a FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program in the amount of, and I got the decimals right this time, $8,898,744.60. And is Mike online to speak to this? Or Dana?
Counselor, I thought Dana was supposed to be there tonight, but I'm happy to take this one, I think.
You got people in the background, okay.
Yeah, sorry, that would be my sister. So this is the FEMA grant. This is the Haskell Dam Project. It's been going on since, I think Mike said at the meeting, 2012 or 2014. Correct me if I'm wrong. It was a very big number to crack. So they had asked them previously to take it piece by piece. So they've been slowly working on this Haskell Dam Project over time. This FEMA grant of 8.8, I think it is, gets the project done and is an incredible accomplishment for the engineering and the DPW Department. And the counselors who are at BNF can feel free to add to that.
Thank you.
Questions for Jill? Okay.
Jill? Hey, I'm sorry, thank you.
That's okay.
So this $8 million, almost $9 million grant, how sure are we gonna get it? And is there a danger that we could have it clawed back?
Oh, you're talking about the, I thought you meant the dam. I'm like, that's an engineering question, Counselor.
No, 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 I'm worried.
No. No, we're confident in, we're confident in this grant. It's under contract already. I'm not, we're not concerned about this getting clawed back. This FEMA money tends to takes, and Bob Rivas is on, so he might have, be able to add to the FEMA money in general too. But this money takes years and years to secure. So this has been in progress. I, I have not heard from our federal delegation or from FEMA management that this is, there's any concern that this will be clawed back.
Been such a good track record recently.
I, I hear you. But this, and again, I don't know if Bob wants to, if, when he gets up, if he wants to weigh in at all. But FEMA, MEMA, this, the funding was allotted. I'm guessing, I'd have to look at Dana's memo, which is in your packet. But the eligibility probably came from a storm in 2018, 19, 2020. So this was allocated a long time ago. This takes a really long time to move through the process.
If it were to be clawed back, we would be on the hook for the cost of finishing the project.
Yes. But I don't, I would highly recommend the council accept the grant and move forward with the work.
Yeah, that's not my point.
I know.
Any more questions? No?
Question, comment, sorry, comment?
No, we haven't made the motion yet, have we? Make the motion, please.
Committee recommendation on a motion by myself, seconded by Counselor Gilman. Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council accept, under Mass. General Law, Chapter 4453A, a federal grant from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security and Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA, and passed through the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, or MEMA, a Hazard Mitigation Grant Program in the amount of $8,898,744.60 for the Haskell Pond Dam Design, Storm, and Seismic Improvements Project. The grant period is from August 5th, 2021 through May 2nd, 2026. And the grant requires a cash match of $684,179.40. And I so move. Second.
Motion made by Counselor Memhard, seconded by Counselor Worthley.
As, as, as Mike Hale presented at Budget and Finance, this is really the third and final phase in a lengthy evaluation. The, all the engineering and study and research has been done, design work has been done. And so this is the actual build-out of the dam improvements that were recommended to prolong the life and useful longevity of, of the Haskell Dam.
Counselor Worthley.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Jill, and thank you to Dana. I watched the Budget and Finance meeting and obviously Mike Hale and the engineering department, Dana and yourself, Jill, should be commended for this. I think we want to also note that there's another $1 million grant that's part of this project. So the overall work is gonna be a little over 10 million, it seems like. And I think that we should just, in general, when we can look at spending $684,000 of municipal money and get $10 million of federal money and Massachusetts money, $1 million in Massachusetts Dam and Seawell Grant, it's a really significant leverage. And to thanks anybody in all this administration for pulling this together over the last, it sounds like seven or eight years now, since the storm in 2018, and our federal delegation and our state delegation, to the extent that they were helpful. And just to be clear, this dam has been classified as high hazard. So the risk is significant if we were not able to stabilize this dam. So that affects a lot of people in that area. So I'll leave it to the ward counselor to comment on that more if that's the case. But still, this is a big, big project. Thank you, Jill.
Counselor Nolan.
This is a great project. It's been going on for a long time. You can see all the progress that's been happening up there with the spillways and preparing for this. And it's, Gloucester has a large amount of drinking water. We have a lot of resources. But, you know, Haskell and Babson are our two major dams that we draw from. So if something happens to Haskell, then we're obviously draining from Babson and piping in from other tributary dams that we have. And we like to bounce them back annually, the reverse of the flush and stuff. So to me, this is a great deal. I understand what Counselor Groh was getting at. But I believe that this is the way to go. It's gonna strengthen us. The amount is gonna be for the higher three feet around the dam in the condition. And I think that a lot of people have done a lot of good work on this. And it's, it's not a ward issue on this. It's a city of Gloucester issue because the city of Gloucester does work off of this six months a year as well as Babson. And I, I can't find any reason not to support this. And I think this is great work going forward and from the administrations going past a couple. And I think this would be great for the city of Gloucester.
Counselor Groh.
Starting to give me that look every time you look at me.
Let's keep it about the dam.
I'm gonna keep it about the dam, but we gotta have some latitude to talk here, Tony, honestly. I mean, the reason, I'm absolutely supportive of this grant. I'm absolutely in support of, of getting $9 million to solve a problem that is going to help the entire community, right? And $684,000 in exchange for 10 million is a great deal. But these are the kinds of projects that the federal government has started to capriciously attack and to withdraw and to, and to deny and to claw back. And I think people need to understand, we heard it once tonight with the USDA grants. Yeah, let me talk, unless I'm, Tony-
That is not about this.
It is.
Nor does it.
It is about the grants. It is about this. Because here's the thing, Tony. Let's move. You got a count, you got a point of order?
I do.
What's my point of order?
You're not, you are off topic.
I'm not. I'm gonna talk about the grant.
Talk about the grant.
Well, unless you wanna write the script for me, let me speak and I will get it out of my mouth.
I would like to not hear about things that are possible in the future. I would like to hear about this particular topic.
Right. So let's accept this grant, be supportive of this grant, but understand this administration is behaving in a way where we could be on the hook for $10 million. We just need to be aware of that moving forward.
Counselor Groh, please. That is related to this grant.
It is absolutely-
It's related to an awful lot of things, but not this particular grant.
With respect, Council President.
Sorry.
With respect. If you wanna call me out of order, I will ask for, okay, I, I, I call out of emotion because I think this is important.
Okay. There's a motion on the table to challenge my point of order.
Um, yes. So moved.
No, he moved. It needs a second.
I second it.
Okay. Do you wanna overrule the chair's ruling that that was out of order?
I think that-
All those in favor? It's not debatable.
Okay, yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No. We, sorry, hold on one second.
I was confused with the motion.
A few or?
A no agrees with me.
Based on the motion is strictly just on this, not?
No, it's on him challenging-
Okay.
Me calling the point of order. If you say yes, it overrules me. And it's a roll call vote. Do you understand?
A no means agree a few, yes, we agree or chasing.
A yes overrules my ruling.
Gotcha.
Just for clarification, what is the ruling that he's trying to overrule?
I said that we were not, that Counselor Groh was getting off topic.
And so a no vote would mean we'd be back on topic to discuss the grant proposal before it's most important.
It just is on the point of order. That's all.
Counselor Grace.
Yes.
Counselor Gross.
No.
No.
Counselor Groh.
Yes.
Counselor Majota.
No.
Counselor Memhard.
Yes.
Counselor Nolan.
No.
Counselor Worthley.
No.
Counselor Benson.
Yes.
Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
The ayes have it five to four.
So it's overruled and I guess we just talk global politics now here.
I think we'll just finish my point, which is that national politics can have a devastating and immediate impact in local politics and local governments. And we need to be aware of that because there are many places where national, we don't think about the impacts of national politics and decisions that are being made and how they impact the local thing.
All right, we've done with the point of order. It was ruled in your favor. We're discussing the dam.
I'm also disgusted, the rule, point of order was that I was allowed to finish my statement. And that is, is that this is something that we need to be aware of. That's all. That local politics are impacted by national politics. And when we agree to accept a $9 million grant that could be capriciously taken away from us, we are on the hook for that and we need to be aware of that. And those, those are the national implications of policy that impact local governments. That's all I wanted to say.
Grace, did you have your hand up?
I did. I just wanted to say that, first of all, going forward, I respectfully request that we talk to each other and not at each other. We're adults. Secondly, I understand where Counselor Groh is coming from because every day FEMA is placed on the chopping block. So I respect where he's coming from with that, but I also respectfully wish that we could just talk to each other. Thank you.
Okay, I will just respectfully ask everyone to refresh the Robert rules for order because in that it says that you discuss the motion on the table. You do not expand beyond that. And I've gotten complaints from every counselor about other counselors about going off. And I'm trying to keep everyone's, respect everyone's position and keep everyone on topic.
Counselor?
We're on the motion now.
On the motion, I would just like to, at, at the risk of being out of order, you know, politics is also local. And if our 3A compliance doesn't go forward, we would lose another million dollars.
Talking 3A right now, I'm sorry, counsel. That is totally out of order.
I disagree.
Sir President? I got a question though. About the motion.
I wanna call a recess before we vote.
I move for a-
Second.
Second.
Five minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Ayes have it nine to zero. Okay, we ready to vote on the motion? Is this a roll call? No. Is this a roll call? No. 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 Not. All right, do we know what we're voting on? The exception of an eight million, eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars, eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand, um, seven hundred and forty-four dollar and sixty cent grant from FEMA. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it nine to zero.
Accepting more money, but on a slightly smaller scale. Uh, our next item is a memorandum from the Veterans Services Director requesting our acceptance of donations to support the KPN Veteran Services in the amount of four hundred and fifty dollars, and the motion would read as follows, on a motion by myself, seconded by Counselor Gilman, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that City Council accept various cash donations under Mass General Law forty-four fifty-three A to support veteran services in the amount of four hundred and fifty dollars from the following members and business partners in our community, whom are Trinity Congregational Church, Michelle Pieroni, John and Janice Bell, and Ed Camo, for a total of four hundred and fifty dollars, and I so move.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Memhard, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Discussion?
I just, if I may, I just want to thank our generous donations to our supporting our veterans.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it nine to zero.
And finally tonight from Budget and Finance, we have a memorandum from our Assistant Fire Chief, uh, Rob Rivas, requesting acceptance of a fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five HMEP grant in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. Uh, Rob, are you available to speak to this?
I am, good evening.
Just want to give a little recap like you did for us at the council.
Sure, sure, this is, this is an HMEP Grant Hazardous Materials Plan that we'd like to update, and, um, it was put together by Colin Buckner, our Assistant EMD. Um, it's twenty thousand dollars no match in conjunction with Manchester Ipswich and Rockport for development and update of Hazardous Materials Plan.
Thank you.
Just as a side note, I was at the MEMA meeting today down in Framingham, and they suggest, they suggested that we move forward with, with any grants that we're, um, trying to obtain at this point, so if that eases anybody's mind in any way, shape, or form.
Thank you.
Sure.
Committee recommendation on a motion by myself, seconded by Counselor Gross, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council accept under Mass General Law forty-four fifty-three A a federal grant from the U.S. Department of Transportation and Pipeline Hazardous Materials Safety Administration and passed through the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, a federal fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Hazardous Material Emergency Preparedness Grant in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. The grant period is through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, there is no local match requirement, and I so move.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Memhard, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it nine to zero.
Thank you, Chief Rivas.
Thank you, Chief. Sorry for the long wait.
That's okay, thank you, have a good night.
Next up, Madam Clerk.
Okay, there are two separate ONA standing committee reports tonight, the first being from February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, for an item that we thought would go to public hearing but does not need to for the general counsel. So the first one will be ordinance administration from February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Counselor Nolan.
All righty, so we have twenty twenty-five eleven Benson, acceptance of GLC fifty-nine, section five, clause twenty-two J, which will authorize the annual increase in the amount of exemption granted under General Law Chapter fifty-nine, section five, clause twenty-two, clause twenty-two A, clause twenty-two B, clause twenty-two C, clause twenty-two E, and clause twenty-two F by one hundred percent of the personal exemption amount, subject to the conditions in clause twenty-two J, to be effective for applications, uh, exemptions granted to any fiscal year beginning on or after July first, two thousand twenty-five, and I so move.
Made by Counselor Nolan, seconded by Counselor, um, Majota.
Friendly amendment?
I seconded that.
Oh, sorry, seconded by Counselor Benson.
Okay, it was to be effective for applicable exemptions. Yeah. Say that, I'm just, it was just a friendly amendment.
Exemptions.
Sorry. Right. Right, so I'm just being clear for the record, that's it, not a big deal.
Any discussion?
And if I may, since I brought this forward, just give.
Yes, please.
I prepared a brief presentation, um, just, if I may, um, clause twenty-two J, if approved, would give veterans an extra tax break on their homes up to a hundred percent, and I know our assessor Nancy will be speaking, but this work, like other tax breaks for seniors, the disabled, surviving spouses, the extra break can't lower the tax bill below ten percent, and if you saw that on the bulletin there, that was in the packet, um, it will help veterans pay less than they did last year, and again, just for the record, this won't go in effect until FY twenty-six, if approved, and just so, speaking of this, and I know that the folks in budget, um, in finance, minimal budgetary impact with a small increase in the overlay account, um, this will have, though, a significant impact in helping our veterans who are most need with minimal effect to our city's budgets. Veterans make up five percent of the city's of Gloucester's population. Our veterans have given so much to our nation, and when they return to our community, many continue to serve in various capacities, whether as firefighters, police officers, or other public employees like DPW, et cetera. Many also volunteer for our community, and as many of you have said, without our volunteers, the city would not run. Many veterans are on a fixed income, as we know many veterans are disabled, um, and many are seniors who have paid off their mortgage already, but with rising cost of living and many struggling with increased property taxes, it becomes harder and harder and the squeeze just grows. My fellow counselors, I hope you vote in favor of the council accepting this and to give our veterans more, and we know we can't, we can't thank them enough for their sacrifices abroad to keep our country safe and at home as they come back and they serve day after day as firefighters, police officers, teachers. Our veterans are also working as employees in the public sector at every level of government, state, federal, and here at the local level. Thank you, and I hope you all will support this, and I know, um, our assessors here, if we have questions, and I really appreciate your efforts on this and also on, Connor as well, his help on this as well, and I know the, if I may, them from looking at the Budget and Finance Minutes, the administration is supportive of this.
Thank you, Nancy.
Good evening, Nancy Pappas, Principal Assessor. I can give you a little overview of, um, what the order is about. The clause twenty-two J became available with the Heroes Act, and it allows municipalities to provide an additional exemption up to a hundred percent of the tax exemptions granted to veterans under the clauses that are listed in Counselor Benson's order. To get an idea what this looks like, clause twenty-two is one of those, and that's an exemption that qualifying veterans receive annually of four hundred dollars now, that would be increased to eight hundred dollars, and in fiscal twenty-four, we granted a hundred and twenty-three clause twenty-two exemptions. Clause twenty-two C is a fifteen hundred dollar exemption currently, that would be increased to three thousand, and we only granted one of those in fiscal twenty-four. Clause twenty-two E is currently a thousand, that would increase to two thousand, and forty-three were granted in fiscal twenty-four. It's important to note that there is no additional state reimbursement with the cost of the additional exemptions, so if we just look at the cost that was incurred in fiscal twenty-four, I'm estimating about a cost of ninety thousand dollars, which can change from year to year depending on the number of applicants, and as you know, this comes from the overlay reserve account in terms of funding. We have been budgeting about four hundred thousand dollars over the last several years, and I would recommend increasing that to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars if clause twenty-two J is accepted, and hopefully I can answer any other questions if you may have any.
I don't, but I just want to thank her for coming, so, thank you.
Questions? Counselor Worthley?
Thank you, I will certainly be supporting this, just wanted to clarify something, um, the way that the motion reads and the way we're discussing it may not be completely aligned, just in case someone misunderstands it, we're not looking for a hundred percent exemption, it's a hundred percent increase in the allowable exemption, so a doubling of the current exemption, correct?
That's correct, it's an additional exemption.
I think Counsel Benson verified that it can't be greater than the ten percent number that you mentioned, so I just want to make sure that I heard it the correct way, that it's a hundred percent increase, AKA doubling of the current benefit people who apply for this and qualify.
That's correct, and we will have to track, um, the information that he spoke about just to make sure that we don't go below that threshold of the ten percent.
Makes sense. My second question, if I may, Mr. President, um, your comment about increasing the overlay, that would be done in the budget process.
That's correct.
Nothing we need to do about that tonight?
Yes.
Any more questions? All right. This is, yes, thank you, sorry you had to stay so late.
Quite all right.
So this is just a.
On the motion? Oh, read the motion.
Yeah. Dylan and Jill seconded.
That's right, and Val wanted to make a friendly amendment.
That's right, yep.
Yeah.
So comments on the motion, on the motion then?
Sure.
I would just like to take a moment to commend and congratulate Counselor Benson for bringing this forward because I don't know that although we all think, I think we all support it, I don't know, I don't know if any of us would have thought of it, so give you credit for bringing it to us and in your advocacy and support for veterans, um, this makes a big difference, so thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Worthley.
Any more discussion? Counsel Benson.
Thank you, if no one else is, I just want to, I appreciate everyone's support on this and helping our veterans, um, who have given so much.
Counselor Gro. Okay, all right, so we need to read the motion again, the correct emo, the correct motion.
I don't want to make a mistake.
Take care.
Have some call back on a wonderful thing. So I did read the black top half of the motion. On a motion by Counsel Majota, seconded by Counsel Grace, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the City Council vote to accept General Law Chapter fifty-nine, section five, clause twenty-two J, which will authorize the annual increase in the amount of the exemptions granted under General Law Chapter fifty-nine, section five, clause twenty-two, clause twenty-two A, clause twenty-two B, clause twenty-two C, and clause twenty-two E, and clause twenty-two F by a hundred percent of the personal exemption amount, subject to the conditions in clause twenty-two J, to be effective, the applicable exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning on or after July twenty twenty-five. I so move.
July one. Second. Motion made by Counselor Nolan, seconded by Counselor Majota. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it nine to zero. Next up, Counsel Nolan.
We have a memorandum from the mayor regarding Susan Robert Wright's appointment to the Gloucester Historical Committee. Um, I can read the motion. On a motion by Counsel Majota, seconded by Counsel Grace, the administration, Ordinance and Administration Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the City Council update the appointment of Susan Robert Wright to the Gloucester Historic Committee from a voting member to a non-voting alternate member, term to end, two fifteen two thousand twenty-six, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Nolan, seconded by Counselor Grace. Discussion?
Isn't just a question.
Counselor Worthley.
Is it historical committee or the historical commission? There's a historic district commission and there's a historical committee. Make sure, I thought it was historical commission, but, um, I'll trust that it was vetted already, so. Sorry. I'm good.
What up?
I am looking it up, but I see historical commission.
Historical commission on here. See what it says here.
I think it is a commission.
It is, it's a historical commission.
So I just.
Hold on.
The mayor, which I didn't see, but maybe. And on the website that says historical commission, Susan Robert Wright is listed already on that as a member of the commission, so, um.
Committee, commission.
Yeah, I hate to be like a nerd about this, it shows.
Because I thought you were saying historically, because there's a historic district commission, and then there's the historic commit, committee, or is that?
Historical commission.
Okay.
But now let's check the other one.
She's being changed to.
They're on the unique.
A non-voting member.
Need to make that amendment.
All right. I'd like to make an amendment that this is for the historical commission, not the historical committee, and I so move.
Second.
Should I get that, I'll give that to Counsel Worthley.
He beat me to it. Motion made by Counsel Nolan, um, seconded by Counselor Worthley on the amendment to change, um, from historical committee to historical commission in all references in the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it nine to zero. Okay, next up, Madam Clerk.
Mining and Development Standing Committee meeting March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Counselor Gro.
Thank you very much, uh, three, uh, non-action items tonight, uh, one was a special counsel permit twenty twenty-five, uh, dash zero zero one Friends Street was withdrawn without prejudice by the applicant, uh, so that may or may not come back to us in a future time. Uh, we did approve the street closures for the Magtoberfest on October twelfth, two thousand twenty-five, a great event, go there and enjoy it. Three, uh, special event application event twenty-four dash seventy-two, we just, uh, modified a street closure issue for the Battle of Bunker Hill at Stage Four Park, which will be taking place on June twenty-first and June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five. Uh, they are going to be the same events on each day, so if you can't make it the twenty-first, go to the twenty-second, and likewise, the other way around, and that's all we got.
There was June twentieth, twenty-first, and twenty-second.
What did I say?
Twenty-first.
Twentieth is not.
June twentieth is not, is not an event that causes any closure, it's a.
Oh.
Yeah, so the, the events themselves are on June twentieth, twenty-first and twenty-second, Saturday and Sunday.
All right, so why is the twentieth here?
There's a, there's an event that, like a sponsorship party or something like that in the park, but it has nothing to do with road closures. And it's, yeah.
You're going to be the grand marshal of this reception.
I'm going to come in period clothing.
Good question.
Go ahead.
Good society.
A minute, want to make an amendment?
Oh.
Oh, no, my question was on the event, whether it be a charge or.
It's, it's all free of charge, Magtoberfest and the, uh, Battle of Bunker Hill events are all free of charge.
Okay, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Okay, yep.
So we need to amend the O and A minutes, because they read committee as well.
That's where...
Counselor Nolan?
I would like to amend the O and A minutes to reflect that the Historical Committee has been replaced with a Historical Commission in all aspects of the evening. And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Nolan, seconded by Counselor Worthy on changing the O and A minutes to reflect the correct verbiage. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it nine to zero. Okay, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Okay, public hearing, twenty twenty-five dash zero zero seven, RZ twenty twenty-five dash zero zero one. Amend GZO Chapter Three Dimensional Regulations by adding a new section, three point one point nine, change of use without exterior changes.
I will open the public hearing, and I will continue it to April eighth, twenty twenty-five. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, a point of order. If the planning board continued their meeting and haven't made their recommendation yet, and then it needs to go to Plan and Development Committee?
It's continuing.
Do we need to advertise it again for the eighth and then continue again, or do we just, we don't advertise until it's actually...
That's one of the problems of it prematurely being arriving, that it's advertised, the public knows, expects it, and it's a no-show.
We don't need to, do we have to keep spending money every time we do this?
No, no, we do not. It only gets advertised once.
Right, and then we continue.
But it's best to have all the legwork done upfront before it goes to any committees.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Public hearing, twenty twenty-five dash zero zero eight, RZ twenty twenty-five dash zero zero two. Amend GZO by adding new section five dash twenty-one demolition delay.
I'll open the public hearing, and continue it to April eighth, twenty twenty-five. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Public hearing, twenty twenty-five dash zero zero nine. Counsel Order twenty twenty-five dash zero zero nine, Worthy, Majota. Amend GZO Chapter Twenty-two, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section Twenty-two dash two seven zero, Parking prohibited at all times, and Section Twenty-two dash two ninety-one, Towaway Zones by adding Washington Street, Eastley Side, at its intersection with Deacon Farm Lane in a southerly direction for a distance of sixty feet.
Yeah, yeah, we'll open the public hearing. Someone like to speak in favor? Counselor Majota, this is your, Counselor Worthy and Counselor Majota, this is your, your baby.
Thank you. I'd be happy to speak in favor. I also want to say this is a collaborative effort with Ward Force City Council, Frank Majota, and this came to us from a number of people who live on Deacon Farm Lane, which is a relatively new street off of Washington Street. If you're driving towards, from, from the rotary side, you get to the Richdales, and the road turns, and as you know, people drive way too fast there. And what's happening is, as you pull out of Deacon Farm Lane, you look left, the way the street curves, you can always see a little bit. You look right, and you look again to the left, and there's a car right there. But one of the challenges is because there are sometimes cars parked at that intersection, an intersection that didn't exist through three years ago, you can't see around the car, and it's dangerous. And so the residents have asked if we could look at creating a space for no parking to increase the visibility, and as it turns out, each time I've driven there, there hasn't been a car parked there. So I don't feel like this is a question of someone losing a space that's their spot that they park at, but it's just, in the event that there is a car parked there, it's not safe making that turn, that left-hand turn onto Washington. So this is something that I think is helpful to the neighborhood and to the safety of the city in general. That's why I was happy to put it forward with Counsel Majota.
And it was...
Okay, I'm sorry, and approved unanimously by the traffic recommended.
There are pictures?
Yes.
Yes, there was, Counsel Worthy.
They just didn't, I, I actually did them for you, but...
You did them?
Yeah. I sent them to you, the pictures.
I took the pictures.
No, I took them off Map Geo and sent them.
Oh, I took pictures, I took them off Map Geo, which is... Right, the pictures I took were from my car.
And almost every time I drive by, there is a vehicle parked in that space.
Okay.
And, you know, we really need to start, we're, we're creating an awful lot of no parking in Gloucester, and I think we really need to start taking stock of, of what we're doing here. So it's, it's, it is off-street. It's not at all, it's on private property, I believe, that that, that that vehicle's parked.
We're still in the middle of the public hearing, I think.
Oh, okay, yes, correct. So, yes, I'm sorry. So, anyone else who'd like to speak in favor?
Sorry, sorry.
That's okay.
I speak in favor of this just for the safety of those people who are exiting the street, and traffic, taking away parking is very minimum.
Anyone, seeing no one online who wants to speak in favor, anyone want to speak in opposition? Communications?
There are none.
Okay, questions from the counselors to the applicants? So I guess now it's time to ask questions of the applicants? Is that what we do when it's each other, or do we just go right to discussion? What would the council like to do? Close the public hearing? Okay. All right, so counselors don't have any questions?
They can ask questions on a national level.
A gavel. I'm going to keep handy. All right, I will close the public hearing. Can we have the motion, Counsel Nolan?
Aye.
On a motion by Counsel Grace, seconded by Counsel Majota, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed. To recommend the City Council amend the Gloucester Code Ordinances, Chapter Twenty-two, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section Twenty-two dash two seventy, Parking prohibited at all times, and Section Twenty-two dash two ninety-one, Two-way Zones be amended by adding Washington Street, Eastley Side, at its intersection with Deacon Farm Lane in a southerly direction for a distance of sixty feet, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Nolan, seconded by Counselor Worthy, I mean, seconded by Counselor Grace.
Someone in this side of the table.
Discussion? Counselor Groh?
Just very quickly, I want to agree with you and, and my concern that we're, we're taking a lot of parking away from people in the city, and one of the things we constantly hear from residents is that there's elimination of too much parking. So I, I'm inclined to always support Ward Counselors' concerns and assume that you have done far more homework than I have done, but I think we need to be really aware of how much parking we are taking away from folks, so.
Thank you. Pulling up now, and it looks like that is in the road. It's not, um, oh, let me go here. It's actually...
Share that tone.
Yeah, could we look at what you're looking at, if you don't mind? Is that possible?
And also, I submitted pictures when I submitted this.
But, at these pictures, and I... Also, Worthy, from Map Geo, and it shows everything in a lot of due to... Or you could punch.
Let's do this together, so we...
Six and O.
Yeah.
Intersection, Deacon Farm Lane.
Sorry.
What's the address? From...
Four sixty-five Washington Street.
From the intersection of Deacon Farm. This address I've got here is one Deacon Farm. Washington Street frontage is four sixty-five Washington Street at the intersection of four Deacons Farm. Oh, how do I get the line picture?
Yep.
All right. You go to themes. Yeah, I'm, I'm right now. Yeah, that's true, you can just go Google Maps.
Mr. President? Yeah, so I just want to also add, it's been asked multiple times by Counsel Groh, and I respect it, appreciate it, that we provide photos. We did provide photos of this.
Oh, we got it right there.
When providing photos, do you prefer like Google Maps or the...
You're not on the property. Go on, look. I was able to get to the screen or something, which...
It goes all the way down. The other way.
And more over, right there. No, no, too far. Down, right there.
Come in.
Now hit the little man, yeah.
Move him over.
Oh, okay, yep. So, yeah, you gotta come this way.
And turn it around.
No, you just hit the arrow coming this way. All right, well, there it is. Nope, on the wrong side of the street. Right there's the spot, I believe. Come this way, hit the arrow going towards us. Wrong way. Nope.
Wrong guy furniture.
There you go, right there. Oh!
That's it.
There it is, there it is.
That's it. So there, there's the spot.
Stop moving around.
And cars, there we go. There it is. There it is, right there.
I finally got it.
This further, it's closer to Deacon Farm Lane.
Started. Keep going to the right, left. There you go, stop. Don't move. I scotched up here.
That's a driveway, that's not, that's not the intersection.
Oh.
It's further to the left in the screen.
No stone wall. You're right.
It's downtown. Further.
Right there.
Bus walk. Back up. I'm either. Question is, what are we trying to accomplish here with looking at?
Oh, just looking at the space, but obviously we're not getting to it.
So I just sent the pictures again that I had sent in back in early February.
Those, those are out of your car, right?
They were accurate, up-close pictures.
So I guess my question then is, when submitting photos, which, do you prefer Google Maps? Do you prefer cell phone, or do you prefer the Map Geo?
Aerial photo, Google Maps. Or Map Geo will get you there, too.
So all with no parking, you prefer aerial Google Maps?
Map Geo, or Map Geo. You just drag the little man over where you want to go.
Yahoo Map work.
Yep. Last fifteen. You guys got a little tutorial. Go grab the little man and bring him to where you want to go, and then you can, then you take him.
I didn't, I brought it up, I wasn't...
Take a screenshot.
I didn't have clear...
Counsel Nolan.
That's true.
All right, well, that was kind of nice to have a little bit of fun, I guess. It's kind of like a video game. On that area, I, I've been out there a few times looking at the complaints. Most of the property that people are parking on is on city property. Sixty feet is technically less than three car spots. A, a public parking spot in the city of Gloucester for a full-size car is twenty-two feet. So you're talking less than three spots on a blind area where people are having a hard time pulling out. The houses in that location have parking off-street. The on-street parking is a dirt part of city-accessed property that was well within where their, their parking is city property. I, too, don't want to see a lot of parking spots go, but in this neighborhood, with the safety factors and the speed situation, which by no one's fault, besides the people that are speeding, the city's trying to control, so I'll be supporting this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. More discussion? Counselor Goldman?
So just to let you know, follow-up on the photographs. It's, we don't have to look anymore, but it's on the February eighteenth packet in O and A on page thirty-six. So there are photos, so my suggestion from a process improvement in the future is that when we know that we want to show one of these in a public hearing, we should make sure that our clerks have this on their desktop, so it's easily shareable. Just my thought, and that's all I have to say.
Yeah, because I, I knew that they were included, they just weren't included in this, in the order.
I believe in the order.
But to, not in our packet tonight.
Not in the pack.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm...
I, I'd like to see maps. No offense, Jeff, and I realize that you're not a professional photographer, but that doesn't actually show me anything. So I, I need to see the map from above, you know, Google Map, boom, where's the spot? That's the way to go, that's the clearest. Some supporting photos might be helpful, but, yeah, I know, I know, but even then, I'm not sure, is it here, is it here, is it here?
Here's why I, if I may, Mr. President, why I also add in photos from... Here's why I, if I may, Mr. President, why I also add in photos from my car is that the point is we want to show that it's difficult to see while you're driving. And so a map aerial picture might be helpful to orient ourselves to the area, but to get the real-life experience of how far is sixty feet, where does the road turn, what's the line of sight look like, I think the best picture to see, and I'm not a good photographer, is what, what it looks like from my driving wheel when I'm, you know, especially when I'm looking. That's the reason why I take them from that.
Oh, you, you can take all the pictures you want, but you can get the driving right on the street in Google Maps. It's not, if you can have the total overview, then you can go, you drag the little man over, then you could, then you can drive right up and down the street.
I didn't know what the little man is.
And then do a screen save. Screen show.
All of the above.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Little person, little figure, the little human figure, sorry. The little human figure that's over there on the, on the left. You grab, grab that and drag it to where you want it to go, and then you can also move it by the arrows.
As Counselor Gilman said, and I appreciate it, is there a way to easily, without giving more work to clerk's office, if you submit it with all appropriate pictures and it's also in the, it's in the council packet for referral, it's at the, the traffic commission sometimes has the pictures, sometimes they don't have the pictures.
If it, if it, if I may, if it's in the packet, we can show that on the screen, right?
What I wanted to say is that going forward, we'll make sure that pictures are also included behind the public hearing.
Yeah, we don't have to go back into Map Geo, they can just bring up the packet, and we'll all have it in front of us.
You have a question?
Yep. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Guys have it nine to zero. All that for a nine to zero vote. Yes, next order of business.
Public hearing twenty twenty-five dash zero one zero, council order twenty twenty-five dash zero one three, Worthley. Amend G C O Chapter twenty-two, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section twenty-two dash two seven zero, Parking prohibited at all times in Section twenty-two dash two ninety-one, Towaway Zones by deleting Main Street and Southly Side, Police Parking only beginning eighty feet from the intersection of Main Street and Duncan Street in an easterly direction for a distance of one hundred and twenty feet to a cross from the intersection of Main Street and Elm Street. All parking restrictions will terminate at the conclusion, construction of the police and court building, and all spaces will revert back to public parking.
Mr. President, I have a question before you hit the gavel.
Unopen the public hearing.
Okay, but the question is, why are we having this? Because this has already been passed.
I will ask the clerk to explain.
Okay, thank you.
There is the sunset clause in this ordinance, but the ordinance needs to come out of the code of ordinances. So this whole section, even though there's a sunset clause, it still lives in the ordinances until it's taken out.
Okay. So why don't we just vote to, or why don't we just?
Yeah, we're voting to delete it.
Oh, that's the, all right.
Unopen the public hearing? All those speaking, uh, who I'd like to represent, Counselor Worthley, this is your order. Would you like to speak in favor? You have to speak in favor, it's your order.
I'm not going to speak against it, I know that.
You can't, by Robert's rules.
You can vote against it. I could, right. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so, you know, the last motion was we deleted, we, we took away sixty feet, this is adding double that, a hundred and twenty, and to your point and to Ms. Poirier's point, if we had done this administratively and just said, you know, no parking until the project's done, then administratively, the mayor could, could just say, we're undoing that and we're back, but because it was put in as a council order and a, an ordinance, um, even if it sunsets, it doesn't actually delete from the ordinance book. So, uh, it was Lieutenant Mike Williams who approached me on this and said, you know, project's done, why are we leaving that parking unavailable? And so, um, I was happy to submit it, and because it was on a deadline, I didn't consult with the ward counselor, Counsel Benson, I hope you appreciate that we're adding parking spaces back in. Um, so this basically returns it to the, um, option, not the option, returns it to the way it was before the project was undertaken and returns public parking to the spaces in front of the police station. Not want to testify on it, but I can answer any questions if there are.
Okay. Anyone else want to speak in favor? No one online, um, with the, no hands raised? Anyone would like to speak in opposition? No hands raised? Do we have any communications?
Where's the, uh, kind of traffic commission voted unanimously for this? I think that came to us as an email from Bob Ryan, maybe? I don't know if we call that as communication, but nonetheless, they supported it.
Okay, um, questions from the counselors? Do you want to just move right on and close the public hearing?
Thank.
I just want to say thank Counsel Worthy for, um, let's be honest.
Not a question.
They're going to close it.
Not a question.
A question.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing. Now, um, read the motion, please, Counselor Nolan.
Under motion by Counsel Majora, seconded by Counsel Grace, the ordinance administration have voted three in favors, zero opposed, to recommend the city council amend the Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter twenty-two, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section twenty-two dash two seventy, Parking prohibited at all times in Section twenty-two, two ninety-one, Towaway Zones, be amended by deleting Main Street on the Southly Side, Police Parking only, begin at eighty feet from the intersection of Main Street and Duncan Street in the easterly direction for a distance of a hundred and twenty feet across from the intersection of Main Street and Elm Street. All parking restrictions will termin- uh, terminate at the end conclusion of construction of the police and court building, and all the spaces will revert back to the public parking and I so move.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Nolan, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Discussion. Counsel Benson.
Thank you, and as this is in my ward, I appreciate, um, and I know this project happened and ended as I was coming on board, but I appreciate, uh, Counsel Worthy for putting this forward, and so folks understand it's parking spots, because some people, it's parking spots right in front of the police station on the other side of the police station, so, because some people are like southerly west, so some folks out there are like, what does that, what does that mean? So, and I was looking, laughing, I was looking at the map, so. But anyway, I appreciate you putting this forward, and I'm glad that we're going to have more spots on Main Street and supporting our businesses that are in much need of parking.
Counselor Gilman.
I have a question. I know it's late on the question. I should have asked it during the public hearing.
All right.
Um, my question is, do we still need to wait thirty-one days for this to become effective, seeing that we're just undoing something that, um, ended and sunsetted? So I would hope that we could waive the thirty-one days, but I don't know technically if we're able to do that under a code of ordinances.
It's not going to be removed from the code of ordinances for thirty-one days. It won't be removed until the next quarter of changes come in, but the ordinance itself speaks to the, the parking restrictions are terminated when the, the project ends, so the, the parking restrictions are over if that project is over. No.
Great. Counselor Grow.
Just want to thank everybody for educating me on what deleting means.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Happy to. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, um, nine to zero, and thank you, Counselor Worthley, for bringing this forward.
Eat of the street. Thank you, everybody. And what do we have next?
For council vote, council order twenty twenty-five dash zero one eight, Worthley, commendation to be issued to the Gloucester Youth Leadership Council.
Hey, um, so do we need to move this? Or, yes, we need to accept this commendation. I'll entertain a motion to accept this commendation to move forward for presentation.
Second.
But we voted, you can't vote out the first time it comes before us.
This is the second time. Isn't it?
It was referred to you at the last meeting.
Wow, sorry.
Yep. All right, motion made by Counselor Nolan, seconded by whom? Anyone?
Second.
Counselor Worthley. So, do we need to read this, or do we need to just accept it as is? Um, it's pretty clear, and we'll be doing a presentation on the April. April twenty-second? April twenty-second. So we move to accept this?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify that in the order that Counselor Worthley submitted, it said April eighth, but it's fine to just say, so just so that the public listening knows, the order says April eighth that it will be issued, but in fact, it's going to be issued on April twenty-second, so obviously the commendations that are printed out will reflect that date.
Okay.
May I ask a question? Will we all be signing this commendation?
Yes.
Thank you.
Speak on it for a moment?
Yes.
Obviously, we're hoping to have a nice ceremony and recognizing the students and the staff that are working on this. Um, it's hoped that each of the students would have their own commendation, but I do also hope that we don't read every single one of them, right? We could list the names of people and, and we're working closely with the health department, French and group, and they are very excited to recognize the kids, and the hope is that they can, uh, feel good about the work they're doing. It certainly helps with their resumes and that sort of things, they're applying for colleges, but it also might inspire other students to want to give back and continue their leadership in the prevention area, so, um, I believe Bruce Tar will be here with a commendation that he'd like to be part of, so I'm hoping there's a nice ceremony that we can spend ten minutes, uh, recognizing these people and maybe doing a, a photo for them.
Yeah, and I'd also like to, um, we did discuss this with the, uh, Board of Health Director, since staff is being recognized in this, and, uh, they were very much in favor of this. You know, we know we have had times where department heads, we consult with the compartment heads when we, when we give, um, recognition to, um, their, their employees, because sometimes they do their own separate recognitions and they don't want people who do just as good work but doesn't get highlighted, um, to feel like they're being left out and say, what about me? So that this has been vetted through department head.
And I don't know that we're giving a commendation to the department, we're just mentioning their work in the, in the, um, in language.
They, they work in that department.
Exactly. Yep, thank you, everybody.
No discussion on this? So we're just voting it to accept it and move forward, correct? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it nine to zero.
City Council proclamation standing up for and defending the trans and gender diverse residents of Gloucester.
And a motion to, uh, accept this proclamation?
Move to accept the proclamation?
Motion made by Counsel Grow, seconded by Counsel Memard. Counsel Benson, you started this ball rolling.
Yeah, and if you would like me, I, we can, would, should we read the whole thing? I know that there may be some amendments to it, but I know sometimes we read them, sometimes we don't, and sometimes it's good to read them in completion. I'm more than willing to, maybe I can read part of it and other counselors can as well.
Okay, there is a typo and, uh, so what's the will of the council? Do we want it read or are we okay with it? Counsel Grow.
Um, I would like to have it read, um, because it won't otherwise be read anywhere else, I can imagine, but also there are a couple of changes that, um, we'd like to make before we vote, so.
So do we want to make those changes before it's read?
I mean, I know other counselors support.
So, Counsel Benson, would you like to read it?
Um, I can read part of it, and if Counselor, um, Grow wants to read part of it, or, um, Counsel President, if you'd like to read part of it, sure. Sure. I can begin and then maybe, um, whereas the Commonwealth Counselor, um, Grow, if you'd like to read that part.
All right. All right. All right, I've been asked by the clerk's office if we're going to make amendments to it, make amendments to it before we read it.
Before we read it.
All right, great.
Yes.
I'd like to make an amendment or two amendments.
Okay, Counsel Grow.
Uh, and the first, uh, therefore be it resolved, I would like to insert after city council, uh, the words and the Human Rights Commission, and then after reaffirms, I would like to do a verb agreement and in, insert instead of its, their, T H E I R. And then, yeah, so this is the same, I have two, two changes of the same nature, uh, in two different paragraphs. So that one would, would read that the city council and the Human Rights Commission of the city of Gloucester reaffirm their, and that would be, that would be the first change, and the second change would be in the final, therefore be resolved paragraph of the same, so it's, it would read the city council and the Human Rights Commission of the city of Gloucester hereby reiterate their commitment to transgender, transgender rights, et cetera. You bet.
Written down there.
Yeah.
To her.
Yeah. Of the city. Uh, because there's both of them, I think they're. Because us two can't.
Sir, Congress President, do we need to vote on these changes?
Yes.
Yes.
Are you, are, were those the amendments that you'd like to move?
Well, uh, Counsel Worthy makes a good point. We can exchange the there for our, it would be the same, same thing, but it'd be a little bit more directly committed to the groups that are making the statements, so just replace those, our commitment.
Major amendment, if the council is in agreement to that, then that needs to get voted on, and then I would move on to the next amendment if different.
Okay.
Is there a motion on the table already?
We're going to hear it. Yep, motion made by Counsel Grow, seconded by Counsel Nolan, and would the clerk please read what the amendment is?
Change that was made was that it now reads, now therefore be it, be it resolved, that the city council, insert, and the Human Rights Commission of the city of Gloucester reaffirm their commitment to the rights and equal protections.
Your response. We're going to refer to amendment.
Yeah. And in the last paragraph, now therefore be it resolved that the city council and insert and the Human Rights Commission of the city of Gloucester hereby reiterate their commitment.
That's the first.
So.
Why couldn't we, why couldn't we add there and?
Was an agreement to all of these.
Okay. A motion's been made and seconded.
So was there a friendly amendment on the, and on the friendly amendment then?
No, just, just let it vote. Let it go.
And then we're going to vote on that.
We're going to change it there to our.
We're going to vote on that.
Got to do it separate.
Just do it. Okay.
Okay. All right, so you've seen the, it's up on the screen. And, uh, you guys ready to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Guys have it. Nine to zero on the amendment.
Move the, the change of the word "their" in those two paragraphs to "our."
Motion made by Counselor Groh, seconded by Counselor Memard. Any discussion? Does everyone understand what that is? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, nine to zero.
Mr. President, was there a discussion at one point about changing the word "ensure"?
Yes, would you like to make those?
Well, I think that it changed, didn't it get changed before it got to this point, though?
Oh.
So I thought you made that motion.
Oh, no, it didn't, because it was already in a pack.
No, I thought you made the motion two weeks ago.
No, I don't think we did. Did we? No, no, we didn't. No, talked about it, but it didn't get made. I remember that. Because it had to be made now, so. In the.
I think you did make the motion, and it got approved.
No.
Because I said I would do it, and you said you'd do it. Remember that conversation?
Yep, but we didn't, we couldn't do it last week, because it was.
This is the first time it's on the.
It was the first vote to make it, move it to this vote.
Okay.
We didn't even open it up, which is.
I don't remember what it was exactly that you'd recommend we change it.
All right, so in the second, therefore, third line down, first word is, or, end of the first paragraph, "and to ensure the greatest extent permitted by law," since we don't have any ability to, you know, enforce this at all, that should be changed to "support." And then in the next. Yep, two places. We don't need a separate vote on these one. Then on the next line down, it's diverse people and ensure transgender, we are going to change that also to "support."
Second?
Add something else? Or "and."
Oh, we're getting rid of "ensure," and we're just adding "support." We're changing it for "support." Deleting "ensure," that's all we're doing, is deleting "ensure."
That a motion?
That's a motion.
I'll second that.
And adding "support." Deleting "ensure" and adding "support" in those two places. All right, I saw movement, it was seconded by Counselor Worthley. Discussion? Everybody understand what we just did?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Guys have it. All right. Now that we have it. And we have to, we have to correct the typo. Okay.
It's just got an extra "I" in.
Not on the one that we're looking at right now. Yeah.
Race is performed in nature.
Okay. All right, we all set? We don't need to. Dylan's gonna start, and then Jason's gonna finish.
All right. We've named the proclamation, a proclamation standing up for and defending the trans and gender diverse residents of Gloucester, be it resolved that the city council of the City of Gloucester and the city council assembled as follows. Whereas the trans, non-binary, and LGBTQ plus community in Gloucester and nationally are being attacked by presidential executive action on January 22nd, 2025, stating that the US government will now recognize only two sexes, male and female. And whereas, according to the 2021 Youth Health Survey conducted by Gloucester's City Department of Health, reported that students who identified as gay, lesbian, or bi reported nearly two, three times more than their heterosexual peers, that they felt sad or hopeless, four times more likely to initially, to intentionally hurt themselves, and four times more likely to seriously consider suicide.
Is that the department that needs to have the "I" taken out, or is that done? The word Department of Health? It's not fixed on our.
All right, it's fixed on there.
It's fixed on that.
Thank you. Right. None of the changes will be on that, it's on that one, or that one. What just happened?
I'm gonna keep reading?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Whereas, a survey by the National Center for Transgender Equality and the National Gay and Lesbian Task Force reveals that trans people experience unemployment at twice the rate as the general population, with trans people of color impacted at a scale four times the national rate. Transgender survey respondents further reported that they experienced extensive discrimination as both renters and homeowners. Nineteen percent say they have been denied a home or apartment because of their gender identity, and their homeownership rates reported as only half the national rate. And whereas, the Williams Institute at the UCLA School of Raw reports that seventeen percent of sexual minority adults have experienced homelessness in their lives compared to six percent of cisgendered straight people, and eight percent of transgender adults have experienced homelessness in the last year alone, while only three percent of cisgendered people did. And where, and.
Oh, I thought you were gonna go on to that one.
Oh, I can do, yeah. And whereas, as the date of this legis, of this legislation, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts law does not restrict access to gender-affirming healthcare and bans insurance exclusions for gender-affirming healthcare, and.
Whereas the Commonwealth of Massachusetts passed Bill H. 1190, an act relative to abusive practices, to change sexual orientation and gender identity in minors in May 2019, which bans harmful and abusive conversion therapy practices. And whereas the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, excuse me, Massachusetts, passed Chapter 127 of the Act of 2022, which protects individuals seeking sanctuary from out-of-state prosecution and explicitly prohibits law enforcement agencies, agencies from knowingly making or participating in the arrest or extradition of an individual pursuant to an out-of-state arrest warrant based on another state's law against receiving gender-affirming healthcare in Massachusetts. And whereas, as recognized in Mass. General Law, Chapter 12, Section 11 I and a half, access to gender-affirming healthcare services is a right secured by the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and now therefore be resolved that the city council and the Human Rights Commission of the City of Gloucester reaffirm our commitment to the rights and equal protections of transgender and gender diverse individuals, declaring itself a welcoming and supportive community for these residents, and therefore, it be it resolved that the City of Gloucester recognizes the importance of gender-affirming healthcare as a matter of health, privacy, inequality, and to support to the greatest extent permitted by law that those rights are upheld for all residents and visitors within the City of Gloucester. Therefore, it be further resolved that the City of Gloucester as a city will not cooperate with policies aimed to harm transgender and gender diverse people, and support transgender and gender diverse people have access to healthcare, housing, education, and employment without fear or discrimination, and now therefore be it resolved that the city council and the Human Rights Commission of the City of Gloucester hereby reiterate our commitment to transgender rights and equal protections for transgender community members, and declares itself a place of safety for transgender and gender diverse people from fear of discrimination in our community.
Motion's been made and seconded, it's been read, time for discussion.
If I may make another change, just at the very end of it, I think where it says "now therefore be resolved," I think it should say, be it further resolved, because then it's saying therefore be resolved, therefore be further resolved, now therefore be resolved. I think maybe you look at the, where it says "now therefore be resolved," and then it should say be it further resolved, be it further resolved, be it further resolved. I think that flows better, if that makes sense. So the last three lines should just be further resolved, further resolved, further resolved. Does that make sense? It just flows. I'm looking at the one that I presented, so it may have just been as people were working on this document, but it just seems to flow better.
There's a difference without a distinction, to be honest.
What?
I think there's a difference without a distinction, to be honest, but.
I just, I was just, it just flows.
Easier thing would be to take out the "further."
That, that can be, that's fine, too.
I make a motion, we delete the word "further" from the second paragraph from the end of the proclamation.
Second.
And then get rid of then, there, at the now, where it says the first now, I would get rid of the first now. As well. And then.
And that makes sense.
That's.
The change, whereas to now we're resolving.
Yeah.
So we're just, I made a motion to delete the word "further" from the second paragraph from the end. Who's seconded?
Seconding. There we go.
Counselor Groh. Motion made by Counselor Worthley, seconded by Counselor Groh. Before we, let's make sure that this is all we want, because we have two nows.
All right. Oh, we do want to.
Right after this. All right, a vote on the, get rid of "further." All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Nine to zero. Now.
One other, it's just an adverb change. We changed the word "support," it changed the, the rest of it. So if you look at the second to last paragraph, support transgender, gender diverse people having access to healthcare. Right, ensure that they have, or support them having it. Right, and you can't support have. The motion. The move that we change "have" to "having."
Second. Second.
I have a motion made by Counselor Worthley, seconded by Counselor Groh.
This is daily, we'll be proud.
Does everybody get it? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
sausage making time. That's right. Motion?
Oh, I. I was, okay, so.
Do we care about the nows?
I mean, it just, it, I would say you have the first now, and then at the end you say, you get rid of that now. I don't know if that makes sense.
It's the final.
Make a motion.
It's the conclusion.
You're gonna make that motion? That amendment?
I wanted to see if there was.
You wanna make that?
I make that amendment, yeah.
Well, what's the seconded?
Second.
All right, motion made by Counselor Benton, seconded by Counselor Worthley to remove the "now" from the fourth, from the bottom paragraph, the very first, therefore.
I think it, I think it.
Oh, no, from the bottom one, I mean.
The bottom one.
I think it lends to the conclusion, but I don't think it makes any difference from what other.
None of this is made, the "having" made more difference than anything else.
Just as I read.
Okay. All those in favor of the now, 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 gone, gone. Okay. Ayes have it, nine to zero.
On the motion, for the whole thing?
Now, on the motion to accept this proclamation. More discussion?
No, I'm gonna discuss, real quick.
Yep. As amended.
As amended, yeah.
Discussion.
I just want to thank Counselor Benson, Counselor Groh for supporting this, putting this forward. I think it comes at a vital time in our country in terms of recognizing that marginalized groups are subject to more tax, and more scrutiny, and more violence than perhaps ever in our recent history. And I think that it's important that the City of Gloucester makes a statement, makes it clear, we, we gain nothing by harming marginalized communities, we gain everything by supporting them and giving them dignity, and safety, and care, and a sense of community. And, you know, it, it's the right thing to do, I'm glad we're doing it, and I hope more communities pick up the torch.
We're here. We need a second on accepting the motion.
Second.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Nolan. Any more comment? Counselor Worthley?
Thank you. I want to thank all the counselors who brought this forward, and Counselor Groh for putting it on the agenda. I think that our words and our actions are pretty well aligned, right? And even if that's not the feeling people have from the national news, Gloucester has always been, and I hope always continue to be, a welcoming community, where everyone is welcome, that the police don't police people any differently, that the fire department doesn't drive any slower, any faster, like, we provide equal services to everybody. And I think that we should just continue, not only to proclaim it, but to act it. So even in our behavior here, if someone comes to the council, I've never seen in this term or the prior term, any less treatment for anybody, whether they're marginalized or not. And I just want to continue that we can, I hope that we just continue leading with our actions as well as these words.
Okay.
So, thank you.
I had to say something, how could, how could that ever happen?
Yeah, believe it or not.
That you don't want to come back?
I wanted to give credit to the Human Rights Commission for taking a vote last night at their meeting to endorse, fully endorse this, this resolution, and, and ask to be included in it. So they, they took that action last night as a group, and I just wanted to acknowledge their participation in this process, and also, in future resolutions, we should, we should make sure to include them and involve them in the, in the conversation, but they were very supportive of this.
Counselor Benton?
First off, thank, thank you Counsel President and Counselor Groh for helping craft this, and I'm glad to see that everyone supported this, and we're signing this, and we'll be putting this on our page on the city website. I think it further expands what we have been doing in this term, is making, taking moments to stand up against hate, and all its forms, and specifically, as we see a rising hatred against the trans community across the board, I am very happy that we are all standing firm as a community to say, we are welcome here, and that no hate has home in this community. Thank you.
I know, I'm gonna say something. I, I, I kind of, this is kind of baffled me, how we can treat fellow Americans this way. It's, this is supposed to be a land of freedom. You know, it's said right in the Pledge of Allegiance, land of the free, you know? And how people choose to live their life should be nobody's business, and how we can be so cruel. Now, I was brought up in parochial school with the nuns, and this is not the Christian, you know, they claim to be a Christian nation, although we should be a nation of many, many religions, because we have religious freedoms. But this is, this is beyond anything that's in the teachings of Christ. I know I probably shouldn't be speaking that in a city building, but I am, maybe I'll get struck down dead. But, but it, it's just this cruelty on our fellow Americans is just quite, it's saddening. And the fact that, that it's done on such a large scale, and, and actually cheered is, is rather frightening, and I think that this, we needed to make this statement for our own community, that we welcome our fellow brothers, sisters, nieces, nephews, mothers, fathers, daughters, sons, because that's who these people are. They're just fellow Americans and they're family, family members, very valued family members who are loved, and why they are so, not just marginalized, but erased, and that's something that should never, ever have happened in this country. So I'm proud of this, and, and that's enough of me. And if that's the end of discussion?
Can I just say something?
Yes.
I, I can't be as eloquent as you, but knowing very well five transgender issues, and, and one of them actually is a relative, and several gender diverse friends of my son. and several gender diverse friends of my son. And knowing what the families have gone through, and what these young adults have gone through, it just seems that this is just the right thing to do. We have to stand tall, we have to speak to what is right and what's equitable and what's fair, and, um, this is the right thing. So, like I said, I can't compete with, um, some of the words that Tony just said, but, um, from the bottom of my heart, I appreciate us being unanimous on this, so thank you.
Start our business, Madam Clerk?
Yeah.
Oh, we need to vote. Oh, yes, I forgot. I wanted to do that, and we had a false start. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved, nine to zero.
Correction of scripeters ever in the motion of the March third, twenty-twenty-five O and A minutes regarding amendments to GCO Article Five, short-term rentals subsections E and J.
Council Nolan. Thank you, Tony. A motion to amend the O and A minutes on March third, two thousand and twenty-five, on pages four and seven, to correct a scripeters error in the motion pertaining to GCO Article Five, short-term rentals, subsection E, by adding to the last sentence, applicable to units registered after four, one, two thousand and twenty-five. In subsection, subsection J, existing unit, by deleting current language and adding existing owner occupied and non-owner occupied residential units that hold a valid up-to-date Massachusetts Department of Revenue certificate of registration as of the four, one, two thousand and twenty-five effective date of this article shall be subject to all sections contained herein, except shall not be subject to section five dash sixty-six G and five dash sixty-six H. This exception shall not transfer with ownership except when the family unit, as defined in section five sixty-six J, and I assume.
Second.
Hey. Councilor Grace, motion made by Council Nolan, seconded by Councilor Grace. Uh, this is just straight up. So. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, nine to zero. All right. So, on to the place where we should be having major discussions about bigger issues. Individual counselors discussion. Counselors have something they would like to discuss? Nope, all right, counselor's request to the mayor, starting with Councilor Grace.
Nothing right now, thank you.
All right, on to Councilor Grove.
I'm good, thanks.
On to Councilor Mamar.
Mayor's office has been responsive to all my ward constituent concerns, and I have nothing further.
Oh, it's LaMajota.
No, I got nothing.
Okay, Councilor Nolan. Oh, no. Val can factor. No, she's, she's, Council Gilman, no, Councilor Benson.
Thank you. Um, a couple of things. Um, one, I've gotten some calls from folks on Willow Street to get some potholes filled. Um, just wanna put that in, a request for the mayor, as well as, um, and I will be sending these requests as well to the constituent services director, but also looking at sidewalk repair up on Pine Street, Church Street, they're in dire need of repair, so I will put those requests and other requests that I have to, um, the administration, and also, folks, slow down.
Thank you. Council Gilman.
I have nothing, thank you.
And I, too, will move this along for a motion to adjourn. Well, Council Worthy, I'm so sorry.
I wasn't even.
That was a personal.
I, I skipped right by you to Council Benson.
Oh, it's funny, I was not following.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. It'd probably just easy to go right down the line, wouldn't it? That's to think about it. Anyway, um, I'll be brief. Um, I got an opportunity to go with Mike Hale and Gail Goodhue to check out the railings at the rink, and I wanna thank again the council for all the support for it. And, um, yeah, Mike worked pretty quickly, Mike Hale did, and the cost was eight thousand dollars. And it's on one side of the rink. The request is, and it probably wouldn't be till next year's budget potentially, to look at an additional railing, an additional eight thousand dollars. Maybe this Community Preservation Act money, um, preservation funds, because it is recreation. But, um, that's a request I just wanna make, and working with Council Majota and the administration on seeing where you can get them. I'd also like to give a shout out to, um, Joe Fitzgerald, our most recently retired police officer. I think thirty years, uh, that's a big thirty-five years, right? It's a long career and a successful career, so congratulations to Joe. Having moved her journey.
Second. Motion. Motion made by Councilor Worthy, seconded by Councilor, um.
I know it was so inspiring when I just said it, it choked up.
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.